Excuse me, Mr. Barry Hill? Are we, are we ready?
Ready.
Okay, well.
You've been wanting to do that.
I have been wanting to do that quite a while. It's 6:00 PM on March, 6:00 PM daylight savings time.
Yeah.
On March 13th, 2023. This is the regular March meeting of the McDowell County Board of Education. Excuse me, and the meeting will now come to order. And the first item of business is the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion regarding?
So move.
Ms. Muma makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Silver seconds. Any discussion? If not, then all in favor of approving our agenda this evening as printed, the motion carries unanimously. All right. The next item that we have traditionally done in the past, got away from it for a little while, and we've started doing this again. The next item is for each of us here in this room to take just a moment to be silent and to and to calm ourselves and offer ourselves up for greater service. So if you would, please. Thank you, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, item four is the pledge of the flag and presentation of the colors. Ms. Puppo, no, Mr. Frank?
Mr. Frank.
Mr. Frank is our representative to the NJROTC program. And do you have some introductions to make?
You know, I was informed by Captain Ross that things are kind of slowed down a little bit. They got a few artmanship matches that they're going to be doing at the end of April, and they're gearing up for a little Miss McDowell, which is Saturday night. And with that being said, Captain Ross, I'm going to turn to their view to introduce the color guard and pledge of allegiance, sir.
Okay. People have a color guard today is Ted Bell, Ted Hindley, Ted Waypastor, and Ted Allen will be here presenting the colors, and I'll lead the pledge.
Okay. All right. Do you would rise?
Color guard.
You'll push it up.
Right, right. Carrie, colors. Forward, march. Hold. Right, face. Present. Colors.
Please join me in a pledge. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie. Colors. Left, face. Carrie, colors. Forward, march. Color guard, hold. Forward, march.
And you may be seated. Thank you.
We'll move along with the meeting then. And the next item, number five, is student recognition. And Mr. Oliver, I'll call on you to handle that item of business.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. And I'm going to ask Ms. Mary Finley, our Director of Career and Technical Education, to come join me.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce a wonderful student that we have at McDowell High School tonight. On Friday, February the 17th, Mr. Key Scholes took five students to the Regional Skills USA Competition at Blue Ridge Community College in Hendersonville, North Carolina. There were 20 welding contestants there from McDowell High School, Swain, Franklin, and Pisgah High Schools. And the students had to perform four different welding tests, a horizontal fillet, a vertical, an overhead T joint, and a MIG weld. Dawson Bartlett placed first in the regional competition. Dawson is a senior at McDowell High School and has taken welding, carpentry, and masonry courses. And he will have his welding certificate from McDowell Tech in May. So we are very pleased to announce Dawson Bartlett is their first place Regional Skills USA.
Ms. Scholes, there you are.
And Dawson will also go on to compete at the state level in April, and we know he will do well there.
Ms. Scholes, would you like to say something to him?
Come on.
Ms. Bennett, you need to come up and say one.
Trying to get underneath this thing.
Okay, one more time.
Congratulations, though.
And now we have some staff recognitions from our Career and Technical Education Program. So Ms. Finley, while you have the floor, would you continue on?
I will, I'll be happy to. Students have the opportunity to earn at least one industry credential in every CT pathway that is offered at McDowell High School. And the attainment of this certificate or credential ensures that students graduate from high school globally competitive for work and post-secondary education. An industry-recognized certification or credentials helps businesses by saving many hours of training time because their new hire is already trained and be confident that the credential holder already has a specific set of skills. An industry-recognized certification or credentials help students by validating their knowledge and skill attainment with an industry-recognized certification. They stand out in the field of job applicants, and they start at a higher salary level. Some of our credentials offer bonus incentives for CT teachers who provide instruction in a course that leads to a student's attainment of an industry certification or credentials. The following McDowell High Career and Technical Education teachers earn bonus pay for the 2021-22 school year by having students earn the following credentials. Mr. Clark Adams, Vet Medical Application Certification and the North Carolina Confidence C Certification in Ag Mechanics Small Engine. And Mr. Adams could not be here tonight. He's attended professional development and went to Salem. Ms. Angie Allison. Angie's Hospitality and Tourism Class earned the Certified Guest Service Professional Certification. Mr. Charles Autry, his Public Safety students earned the FEMA Emergency Management Institute. Mr. Chad Brewer, his students earned the National Center for Construction Education and Research in Construction Corps and Masonry. Ms. Kristen Clark earned Food Protection Manager Safe Plates. She had obligations with her children and could not be here tonight. Mr. Charlie Davis, Woodwork Career Alliance Saw Blade Certification for his woodworking students. Mr. Paul Davis, ASC Entry Level Certification, Maintenance and Lot Repair and Automotive Service. I don't know if Mr. Davis is here. Mr. Mark Lowman, the National Center for Construction Education and Research, Construction Corps and Carpentry. He's not here. Mr. Chris Marsh, National Law Enforcement Certification with his Law and Justice students. And Mr. Marsh is at teen court tonight. We have four cases going on there. Ms. Heather Martin, her marketing students earned customer service and sales. Mr. Barry McPeters, his students earned the FEMA Emergency Management Institute Certification as well in public safety. And Mr. Key Scholes, students earned the AWS Sense Entry Level Welder Program, Shielded Metal Arc Welding. Congratulations, job well done.
Thank you all so much for what you do today.
All right. We're, we're all so very proud of our Career and Technical Education folks. Y'all, y'all really knock it out of the park. Thank you all. Uh, next is correspondence, and Ms. Smith, do we have any? No correspondence this evening. Next is a request to address the board in public comment. And we have four folks that have expressed a desire to address the board this evening. Laura Bustos. Is, did I say that right? Carlos Lopez Enriquez. And Donna Ledbetter. And Paula Swebs. With the board, is there a motion to hear these folks in public comment?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Frank and a second by Ms. Muma. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor then, and permission is granted. Now, I need to tell each of you that we welcome you here this evening. But pursuant to public statute, general statute, and our own board policy, we invite you to speak to the board through public comment. And this is a time for you to say what's on your mind to the Board of Education. It's not a time for us to debate or a direct question and answer period. And the board members will not respond except to request clarification of a point that you may make or raise. But incorrect or misleading information may be responded to at the direction of the board chairperson. So you are allowed to address the board concerning any topic that's within this board's jurisdiction. And pursuant to confidentiality concerns and matters related to due process, the board will not hear issues or concerns, either positive or negative, regarding specific employees or students. If you have any concern of that nature, please contact your superintendent, Mr. Oliver, after the meeting. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting are unlawful and can result in removal from the meeting. You're allowed to speak for no more than three minutes and may only speak once during the public comment period. Ms. Muma asked each of you earlier, since all four of you want to speak on the same matter, if you would like to elect a spokesperson, and that person would have five minutes at speaking on behalf of a group. So I understand that you folks want to speak individually. So we will begin with Laura Bustos. Please, if you will, go to the podium and tell us. Okay. Ms. Dowdell, our able assistant this evening, will be the timekeeper, and she may tap you on the shoulder or whispering to you that you have 30 seconds or so left. Okay, Ms. Bustos, the floor is yours.
Good evening, school board, good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Bustos. I work for the Centro Unida as their office manager. And I just want to desire for this public comment to encourage and provide the resources for our educators to attend any DEI meeting or reinforcement or teaching that they need. Um, so a little backstory about me. I was brought here to the United States when I was two years old. And I began my education here in, here in North Carolina. So I went to school here my entire life. And throughout my entire life, obviously, I went to school with 70% population who were white kids. For obvious reasons, we do live in McDowell County. But throughout my entire time going to school, never once was I encouraged to embrace my Hispanic roots. And it wasn't for a lack of wanting to from educators, but it was a lack of knowledge. And throughout that time, instead of being encouraged to embrace those roots, I suppressed them. I felt like I needed to be just like a normal white girl, and I wasn't, obviously. And so what I want to say is that we have the opportunity for inclusion because I feel like this nation, and was educated that this nation was built by many adoptions from different nations. We have a little bit of everything. And I believe that if our educators are well-educated in the topic of diversion, inclusion, and equity, then our students and our kids could also know what it's like, what it's like for different nations and how it is in other places that's not just here. I believe that if we start to encourage that, then we can not only help this nation, but we can help other nations, and we can be more diverse in our school systems and encourage those kids to not be scared to show who they are and where they're from, to not be ashamed. Because I know when I was a little girl, I was ashamed to be Hispanic. And it wasn't anybody's fault. But I just believe that if we include a little bit of everything and a little bit of everyone, then we can move mountains.
All right. Anything further?
No, sorry.
Okay, thank, thank you, ma'am. All right. Next. The next speaker this evening, and I'm calling these folks in order that I did earlier, is Carlos Lopez Enriquez. And sir, the floor is yours, and you remember the rules, right? All right.
Awesome, so good evening, audience, and Mr. Frank and respective members of our school board. My name is Carlos Lopez. I also work at Centro Unida, it's a local nonprofit here, serving Latinx and various amounts of community members here. At the end of the day, all our services are for the community at large. I'm retired, so, not really. But, so this also, this public comment is in the interest of encouraging DEI or diversity, equity, and inclusion concepts in our educators' training or any sort of meeting that has to do with the orientation of our students, right? So you hear a lot about diversity, equity, and inclusion these days, and it might sound a certain way on paper, but in practice, you can really tap into the curiosity, the leadership, and above all, the potential of our youth in our community. And as we all know, our students spend about an hour to an hour and a half of their days during the work, during a normal work week with four or more educators in their day-to-day life, right? And our educators have leverage in constructing a mindset for our individual youth to retain information that is new and to keep an open mind while retaining that information and learning about it. And this information, which really revolves around the richness of sharing our individual cultures. And in the interest of full disclosure and transparency, I am not a US citizen. However, I was, much like my colleague, Mrs. Bustos, I was brought here at a young age, but I never once doubted calling this place my home. Not one, one because of the relationships and the opportunities that I've been given while I'm growing up in this community, but also learning the history and going to school and not being able to take advantage of all of the opportunities, but still being grateful for those that are presented to in front of me. And, but one thing's for sure, it feels fulfilling when I have the opportunity to not only embrace, but to share my culture because it's, there's a richness behind that. And as someone who works in developing our youth and, well, I think I forgot to mention this, but I am a youth coordinator at my job. So I work with a lot of students and youth in pretty much developing, developing them and giving them the tools to be able to navigate life socially, personally, mentally, emotionally, all that stuff. And I think at the end of the day, the changes in their life allow them to be a team player, but not only a team player, but a good neighbor. And I think that being a good neighbor starts with understanding where your neighbor comes from, no matter how far it is. And so at the end of the day, we are a part of this big expanding story of humanity. So it should be easy for us to be on the same page. And we all walk on the Lord's green earth, so it should be easy to find common ground. And with that, I conclude my three minutes. Thank you, school board, thank you, audience, for having an open ear, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Okay. The next person that would like to address the board this evening is Donna Ledbetter. And madam, the floor is yours. You remember the rules now? All right. Okay.
As he said, I am Donna Ledbetter. I am the Director of Equity of Westmarin Incorporated. And we have all been taught that we were created equal. And that's a beautiful concept, but it's not the truth. And diversity, equity, and inclusion have become cliche buzzwords. Equity is being seen as taboo. DEI is not a comfortable conversation for most people. It's a new concept to a lot of folks. But we all need to learn to sit in our discomfort and see things from a different perspective. If you are not looking beyond D and I, which is diversity and inclusion, if you're not adding the equity, you need to start looking at things through a racial equity lens, a language justice lens. If you're trying to force your religious beliefs upon people who do not believe as you do, you are saying to our students who are not white, who are not Christian, who is not heterosexual, or who does not have white English as their first language, that they are not the norm, that they are not important or included. And none of these things are prerequisites for students to attend a safe, diverse, and inclusive school system. I am hopeful and I'm thankful that you guys are considering the Dream Builders, and I hope that will be your first step in implementing DEI policies, practices, and procedures within our school systems. There are also local organizations like my organization, Westmarin Incorporated, that offer DEI workshops and training as well. When my colleague and our executive director gets up here to speak, she'll talk to you, and she'll say the same thing. It's all about collaboration and not a competition. The more partnerships we build, the more diverse, equitable, and inclusive our school systems becomes, and the better the outcomes for all of our children. All of our children, I have that in capital letters. So in closing, I would like to leave you with the following things for group reflection. Ask yourself, what is so extreme about teaching real history? Why is there a fear of a concept that has not even been taught at the K through 12 level? Why do you feel that everyone has to subscribe to your personal or religious beliefs? And what would Jesus do? So let your light shine before men, that they may see your good works and glorified by your Father in heaven. Like Paul said, we all walk on the Lord's green earth together. When we get in heaven, I bet you there'll be a lot of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you for your time.
All right. And our last public comment speaker this evening is Paula Swebs. Ms. Swebs, there you are. You remember the rules now? All right.
Okay. All right, I'm Paula Swebs, the Executive Director of Westmarin Incorporated, and we are the first and only black man nonprofit in the county. I stand today to encourage, to hear that, encourage to hear that the school board has been working to develop a plan for supporting training and learning on diversity, equity, and inclusion for students and teachers in the school system. We have been working with school leadership for several years to champion this process. Notably, our youth leaders led a photo voice project and shared concerns related to racism, discrimination, and bullying happening at the schools with the school board, school administration, and teachers. I'm excited to hear that their voices have been heard, and I would love to learn more about the plans that are in motion to address these issues with Dream Builders and Education Incorporated. And I also look forward to continuing to be a thought partner with you in this work. One concern I have is that leaders, nonprofits, and Christian conservative groups that are actively trying to intimidate and suppress learning in action on DEI in our community. It brings to mind to me how masters oppress their slaves by using the Bible to intimidate and dehumanize them. It's going to take all of us to unite, all of us, to unite against these harmful and divisive groups, to build a community rooted in love, not hate, and to unite us and not divide us. I stand here as a Christian who believes in God, and I know that God is love. We know all the first 10 commandments. Let's refresh ourselves with the two greatest commandments in the New Testament. You are to love the Lord your God with all your heart and all your soul and all your mind. And the second one is love your neighbor as yourself. Whenever we took our youth on a civil rights trip down south through Birmingham, Alabama, they were in tears. They were mad. They were traumatized because what they had seen in that museum they had never taught in their schools. So if we're truly about educating our students, we need to start thinking about that ourselves. I invite you to join my nonprofit in DEI conversations. I invite you to join my nonprofit in DEI conversations with local policymakers, law enforcement officials, youth healthcare leaders, and faith leaders for our next roundtable discussion on Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM. And you're also welcome to join our monthly forums. It's every third Thursday of the month. This weekend will be at East Marion Methodist Church from five-thirty to seven-thirty. And we have been very intentional in building equity in our places. And that's why Donna spoke everything she said. We want to make sure that equity is in our places.
Alright. Thank you, folks, for your input. Uh, next on the agenda this evening is a presentation on the Dream Builders program by Dr. Kinston Griffin. And, uh, Dr. Griffin, the floor is yours, sir. And I understand you have a PowerPoint presentation? Garrett, are you ready? Okay.
So, good evening, everyone. And it was four people. Good evening, everybody. Everybody do me a favor, hold your hands up real quick. Now shake them. You can say if you're shaking hands with everybody, nah. Uh, to the school board and to each and every person here, I'm Kinston Griffin. And first and foremost, I want to say I am blown away and very thankful that I can do as Dorothy would say, there's no place like home. As a resident of North Carolina, the Ardeel Stachville guy that just, uh, graduated a few years ago. You put your head down. You don't believe me, okay? Maybe a few, few years ago. Uh, I, I did not know that these were going to be the public comments tonight. So, um, my father's a minister, just as I've met my new brother, Mr. Larry. So my father said, blessed are the brief, for they shall be asked back. So I will not stand before you long. But I think that it is important that you've already begun in some way, shape, form, or fashion talking about equity, inclusion, access, diversity, uh, belonging, and most of all, inclusivity plus. And when you begin to talk about these conversations, I think that in my short period of time, I think it's important for you to hear less about what I say and more about who I am. I grew up in a little place called Statesville, but I really grew up in Mooresville. Not the Lake Norman side, but I grew up in Mooresville. They called it Mayhew Town. And I remember going to middle school, um, what we did not have visually was a whole lot of diversity visually. What we did have is a whole lot of love. And I think that's important for us to hear, point number one. The second thing is I began to go to South Ardeel High School, and then I had a football coach by the name of Mr. Bill Mayhew. For those that know about wrestling back in the day, Coach Mayhew was one of those leaders that taught a lot of people in reference to the power of wrestling. Well, within that, I was a football guy, and all of my Appalachian State grads don't, uh, hurt me for this, but he got me a full scholarship to Appalachian State. And I said, thanks. I said, but I think I wanna go somewhere else. And he was like, I did all this work, and you finally passed the SAT. Stay in school, stay in school, stay in school. I say all that, I did my undergrad at Livingston College and continue to go on to further, uh, educate myself. But the persons that I think that I, I, I want to make sure that we understand, um, that helped educate me, Google Mr. Bill Mayhew, 'cause he might not have looked like me, but he treated me as if I was one of his young persons or sons. When you start talking about equity, inclusion, access, and diversity, it will get confusing real quick, because you'll look at me and look at this gentleman and think that we're different. Do you have children? You love your children. We have something in common already. I have a child. You wanna? No, I'm joking, I'm joking. But, don't tell my wife that. But there's already an inclusive opportunity if we choose to get to know each other. So we're talking about Better Together for Children, so I think it's important for you to look at the second slide. It says, "Most people try to make a better world for our children when they should be doing, or what they should be doing is making a better children for our world." And that's what I believe the educators here are doing in McDowell County schools. But if all you know is all you know, it does not mean that they're all there is to know. So we have to put ourselves in a position, point number two, to consider inspecting what we expect. Because at the end of the day, if I know like you, it's one race, it's the human race. And I don't wanna sound as if a religion overtone, but if I need a blood transfusion, I really don't care what color you are. I really don't care what you believe in. If my daughter or you ever saw the other color? Both? Both? How old are? Nine, seven. You got a few. It definitely doesn't, but between nine and seventeen, as men, what we want is what's best for our children. So if that means education in some way, shape, form, or capacity, that's safe. That means if it's true transparency, that does not teach hate. But we have to figure out, well, what is important for children? Because one of the things that I've learned over my years as a practitioner, the young people don't quite have the challenge that the adults have. The young people look at it as if we wanna have fun, we wanna play, we wanna get to know each other. So when you look at slide number three, some of you are like, well, why did we, uh, why are we considering Dream Builders communication? We've spoken at the North Carolina State School Board Association Conference, and I think that's where McDowell County schools had heard of us. You can go to the next slide, you see those faces. But as you begin to see those faces, you'll begin to see the next slide will show some faces. So when the school board, uh, association asked us to start teaching some equity-inclusive practices, it started with the state of North Carolina superintendents. That's all one hundred and fifteen superintendents that our firm began to teach. Chris, my colleague that does a lot of legal work, seeing him around, so good to see you, my friend. But he knows like I know, when it comes down to creating inclusive practices, go to the next slide. The first thing you have to do is you have to get someone that really understands what the work is about. And I'm not saying that we're the best at the work, but what I am saying is HR Tech in two thousand and twenty ranked us as one of the top ten firms across the United States that teaches equity, inclusion, access, and diversity. Now, the next thing you're thinking, okay, how can we afford that in McDowell County? Understand that sometimes favor is not free, but favor is fair. And you've gotta understand, when you have favor, you don't necessarily worry about cost. Because what you may or may not understand is, we're working with at least four school districts that are surrounding you. So we come right before we get to you, we skip over you, and then we go to two other school districts. So it kinda only makes sense that there's a potential for partnership. The next slide will show you some of our clients right now that are working on some of the things that you're considering to take the path upon. You'll see Ardeel Stachville Schools, no secret. But you'll see the one that's really close to you is Caldwell County Schools, which is, I would consider them not a client, I would consider that superintendent, Dr. Don Phipps, a friend. Not only is he a friend, but he's also your state superintendent of the year. And this was not an easy conversation for McDowell County or Caldwell County. But how did it start? The next slide says, "It starts with an assessment." And some of you all are wondering, what is the value proposition? I think before I try to throw anything upon anybody, what I clearly heard, and these are some dates that I wrote down, is March the twenty-eighth, there's something that's already happened. Somebody from my team probably needs to sit into that meeting to find out what's already in place. Also, it sounds like on the third Thursday that something occurs at five-thirty that's already in place. So if you really want to begin to collaborate and partner, I don't believe that we have to have all the answers. But I also don't believe that you have to have all the answers, nor does the board. But some of the value propositions that some districts have elected to do as such is the assessment, leadership development processes, and what does that mean? Well, our program starts with leadership development. It does not start with a equity assessment, a customization of best practices around inclusion, but it starts with a leadership assessment. And people are like, well, I thought you were coming here to talk about equity. I came here to talk about leadership, because if you get proper leaders in place to be informed, which I believe you already have, if proper leaders are in place, equity becomes easy. And you're probably saying, well, how's it becomes easy? 'Cause it depends on how it's presented, when it's presented, and here's the big one, don't judge me, but Kenny Rogers said it best, you gotta know when to hold them. You gotta know when to fold them. Some days, you gotta know when to walk away. Some people are so passionate about this, and they don't know when to walk away. Then there are other times that you've gotta run. But running does not mean cowardness, because I'll tell you this, uh, what I've noticed tonight, that Dawson, that has just gotten first place in welding, that's what we have to support. Because you're probably saying, well, why is that a difference? Because we have to be careful talking about a four-year education, because if he goes on and does what is entitled for him to do with an associate's degree, loving everything about education, he will make more money as an archaeologist welder as the average teacher that has a master's degree by the year of twenty-twenty-seven. That's inclusion. So we have to be cautious to say, well, you've gotta go to a four-year. He could actually do a two-year program and be as successful. But we also have to give him the encouragement and the tools to say, you can do this. We want you to be successful. And it doesn't mean that it's a bad thing that you're putting things in place, but if you look at the awards tonight, I counted eleven different individuals that talked about CTE. Some of those programs are not four-year programs. Many of those programs are. But what they are is employing a working society in McDowell County, Ardeel County, Caswell, Buncombe County, whatever county you wanna look at. That's where the employment comes. You can begin to see that I won't bore you with this, but many of you all are saying, what are the next steps? I know you're wondering. Go to the next slide. So what are the next steps look like? Well, you've gotta level set with the CEO, or with the superintendent. Why is that so important? Well, it doesn't make sense for us to come in and not know what the strategic plan looks like. What are the school improvement plans? We've gotta get a framework of what you already have in place. And I've had multiple super, uh, conversations with your superintendent, and I just wanna take a point of personal privilege. You're very fortunate to have a leader that has served our country and has integrity. Give your superintendent a big round of applause. The next step is it's gotta start with a board retreat. When I talk to corporations and companies, they'll say, we want you to work with our line staff. And I said, you probably selected the wrong company. We wanna work with the CEO and his or her staff that are the ones that are leading the organization. So it starts with the school board. We wanna have a conversation with them is, has this conversation come about? What does the conversation look like? And people are like, what do you mean by the conversation? Well, what I mean by the conversation is, do you like, and this is only an example, the New York Yankees or the New York Jets or the New York Giants? All of them are sports teams, and I'm just using sports as an analogy. But all of them are not the same. The Jets fans are totally different than the Giants fans, but they're all in New York. So what kind of fan will it be? I think it's important for us to be fans of children. Children that have special needs, children that speak English, children that don't speak English. Children that look in the mirror and say, you know, I do wanna go to a four-year school, but our finances say that I might not be able to go to any school. Then we align them with the CTE program that says, you can go to school, but not only you can go to school, have you ever thought about starting your own business? Leverage the fact that there is something called the early college. That's another equitable opportunity, that you can now begin to look at the early college. And who knows, after that two-year experience, someone may desire to have a four-year experience. As you begin to look at after the school board, central office and professional development, summer institutes. But remember, the slide before that talked about the assessment. You don't start beating people over the head until you find out where they are. There are seven principles and tiers of levels of equity and inclusive training. Everybody's not gonna be at the same level, and everybody may not connect with a certain presenter or a speaker. So that's why you've gotta work with principals and assistant principals in doing dual walkthroughs. Why are dual walkthroughs important? 'Cause we want principals to tell us what's going well in their building. How dare us come into your county and tell you about your building? Wouldn't it make more sense for you to tell us what's going well before we tell you what is not going well? So it's called partnership and relationships. And then customize, uh, school feedback and support sessions in one-on-ones and small focus groups. Finally, as you go to the next slide, and that last point there says, school-wide professional development. We're looking at early release days and days that align, that don't take away from academic time. These are things that we found that really work well in different school districts. But if you look at those four words up there, respect, all of this starts there. You know, it was a, a young lady that was standing right here, and I was trying to do everything to get her attention. It was you. I was trying to get your attention. Because I can't talk about anybody else, but Reverend Griffin raised me differently. It's not about black, and it's not about white, and it's not about young, and it's not about old, but that's a woman. And I was trying to get her attention to get my seat. You're probably saying, well, Kinston, you're the presenter. So what? The only person cares about the doctorate degree is my mama and the people I paid the money back to. Values. You have good values here. In McDowell County, I'm a musician in my church, and I remember when we were on what I called a quartet circuit. We used to come through these neck of the woods and play a lot of different churches. But you know what I never found in my experience? That no one treated me bad at your gas station, that no one treated me bad at your Hardee's, that nobody treated me bad when I wanted to get something to eat at one of your local restaurants. But what is clarity? I think that clarity means that I've gotta understand where you are before I ever tell you where I am. Stephen Covey says it best, first seek to understand, then seek to be understood. And then we've gotta serve all people. Not the ones that are in your clique, not the ones that have your last name, not the ones that don't know your name, but the ones that wanna have a name that can be well represented. I will tell you this, I make no promises that we can fix everything, but I will make you this guarantee. As we partner together, if this is your choice, because this is what I would tell you. Don't jump up and sign any agreement with anybody until you've done your own homework to find out who we really are. You've been provided a list of references that I think is important for you to check. And I know you're sitting there thinking, now, wait a minute, boy, you have lost your mind. You taught that good, and you told them to check you out? Because I don't wanna be your partner, I wanna be in a position that we have a marriage. Partners come and go. The marriages that my parents have had, and I'm only talking about mine, I'm not saying something is wrong, if somebody's done something different. But the Griffins have done it for forty-two years. I know my dad didn't do everything right, but they figured out they have differences. But what my dad said as I prepared to close, and if the board has any questions, I will avail myself to do so. What happens in our house? You refinish the sentence for me. Hmm. Interesting that my daddy might not look like yours, but you know my daddy. Thank you so much for your time. Give yourselves a round of applause. At this point in time, are there any questions from the school board that I may be able to ask or answer in any way, shape, form, or fashion? And I will state, if I do not have the answer, uh, because I have, uh, forty-seven team members that work out of Huntersville, North Carolina, Atlanta, Georgia, and Chesapeake, Virginia, that they, uh, may be the ones that have to have the answer. So if I sit here and say, you know, that's a great question, let me get back to you. That is not because I'm trying to impress you. I'm just trying to impress upon you that I must keep my integrity even when I leave your county. Does that make sense? Any questions?
Any, any questions from the board for Dr. Griffin? Anyone?
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Alrighty.
That's alright.
Sure.
I'd love for someone to go ahead of me, though. Anyone else? I'm the junior member here. So, uh, the walkthrough struck me as, as an interesting, I looked at the, uh, contract for services, and the, the walkthrough is about half of the hours. If, and if I understood what you had down right, it was about a total of twenty-six or twenty-seven hours. And about half of them were walking through the schools. And so you walk through with a team, and that's to inspect, or what, what is the?
Great question. So I'll tell everybody, there are three components to the walkthrough. Number one, you've got to build rapport before you begin to have conversation. So the first thing is, we'll sit in the principal's office based upon, they'll get a, what we call a doodle schedule, and they get to pick a time that works best for them. And we'll go through for the first fifteen minutes, sitting, uh, in the office, trying to get to know who they are, what's their educational philosophy, see if we have any kind of connections in any way, shape, form, or fashion. Then we'll do a walkthrough, and then that particular educator gets an opportunity to share with us exactly what they see that's going well in their building, in any way, shape, form, or fashion. It could be academic, it could be inclusion. And then ultimately, as we go through a full walkthrough, and this does not exclude just what we would call your traditional, uh, core classes, we would like to see the entire student body. So if it's masonry classes, we wanna see what happens in your masonry classes. What we're really trying to do, uh, Mr. Abernathy, is looking, identify some of the best practices of inclusion that you already have. Many times, you're doing the work, you just may not be aware that you're doing the work. Your color guard did the work today. There was a young lady leading us today. That young gentleman that looked like he was at the end on my far left, your right. It appeared that he may have been younger than everyone else, um, but it still didn't mean he was less than anyone else. After the walkthroughs come through, then we're looking at from a holistic district perspective, and I think that's important to hear, that then we can look at commonalities. Because the average middle school principal, guess what they don't get a chance to do? Go see another middle school, 'cause they're running their middle school. So then we're trying to look at what best practices are, and then as we begin to bring the principals together, we'll identify what some of the best practices are currently happening in three capacities, in the district, at your school, and sharing the ones that are going for. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And so the teachers, there is not a training session per se that involves teachers at this point. You're dealing with, with, uh, school leadership, school board, administration, principals. And then I'm assuming at a future point, you would, you would love to come back in and do additional training with teachers.
Well, so the answer to that is yes and no. Here's what I mean by the yes and no. You have the flexibility, and we do this with any school district in a new relationship. You may have one thing on your service agreement that you may come back and say, you know what, our- You may have one thing on your service agreement that you may come back and say, you know what, our teachers have gotten the buzz, and our teachers really want professional development. So if I were you, if you hear that, no disrespect to us on a piece of paper, throw it out the window. If I'm saying, why would you do that? If people need something, don't prohibit them from getting something. So if you need to shift a service that one school, cause I can tell you now, some schools are gonna be further ahead than other schools. Some communities are gonna be further ahead. So that does present itself as one of the methodologies if you choose to. But that is up to the superintendent and the leadership team. Or if you decide to do that from a board perspective, you all could make that decision. That would not be my call. You gotta give me one more, I'm on a roll. Did that answer your question? Okay. Yes, sir.
Dr. Griffin, I got a question. You know, several community, you know, I think they want this answer as much as I do, you know, in some ways, but you know, you coming from a Christian background, uh you'll understand this question, but some people would think, going by your website and looking through this, that dream builders could be an avenue to invite certain groups or people that work against religion or God's word to come into our community and to grow and bring in more negative than good. What is your uh take on that as far as dream builders?
Yeah, they must have looked at the wrong website, cause that's not us. So I, I would think that, and I'll just use the NFL as an example. Um I have yet to be at any game that they don't have a prayer beforehand. But if you think about in January, my biased opinion, there was a national prayer meeting on TV. But we didn't call it that. What we thought was a young man had cardiac arrest. But it's so amazing that how we've said that we can't say a certain thing, and the whole world was saying, pray for Damar. So I would say that from our perspective, um we have to meet every organization where they are. Um some of you might have noticed it when I came in and sat there. I wasn't closing my eyes because I was tired. I closed my eyes because I needed a little bit of help. And I'm just talking about Kinston. But I also have to be sensitive that everybody may not have the same help that Kinston desires to help. And I'm also aware that regardless of where your help is, that is not my business. My business is to make sure that I help you, not worry about where your help comes from. Did that answer your question?
Absolutely. Thanks, sir.
Nah, I cuss a little bit, so I can't say I'm a preacher. I'm a preacher's kid, so y'all know what PK means. So work with me, don't, don't. I'm working on that side of me. Any other questions from the board? And, and let me be real clear. Ask me those questions. If you're really looking to go into an agreement with anybody, it may not end up being us. But I humbly say you have the CEO of a company that's standing before you in twenty-four states in two different countries. I'm as country as a truckload of okra. I've just been blessed. I grew up in Statesville, North Carolina. We had white oaks. That's the flea market. And I didn't care what color you were, because guess what? If I needed some lime soap, we went to your house and got lime soap. If I wanted some cornbread, I wanted to come to your house and go get some cornbread. If I looked at the Dukes of Hazzard at eight o'clock, I was looking at the Knight Rider at nine o'clock. But the, what was on the top of the car didn't necessarily represent the people that I lived around. That didn't bother me. What bothers me is when people try to hurt people that have nothing to do with what they're trying to do. Questions? Give me one more. Yes.
What, what sort of a expected life of the program would you imagine? A year, a school year?
Let me check my left knee to see how much I got left in me. So I'll, and that is a great question, but it is unfair. Let me tell you why. No, it's not unfair. It's more challenging than not. Because you have an interim superintendent. And as a superintendent goes, sometimes thus goes your school district. So, but what we can say about your neighboring counties, and I'll just give you a few names, cause I talked to these individuals to make sure I can identify that. We only ask you to do a one-year commitment, and then in the ninth month, let's sit down and do a true evaluation to find out exactly where we are. We will talk to, and some of the stuff that we're gonna do is not, you're never gonna see it in a proposal, cause you're gonna be like, okay, they're basically giving it away. Then when you give somebody more than what they want, then they'll say, well, what's wrong with it? Why does something have to be wrong with it? Because you got something in that capacity. I'll tell you how we're gonna cheat. We're gonna catch uh Caldwell County, and then we're gonna come right up the road. We're gonna catch Asheville and come right back down the road. Because we know that you don't have the budget that a Charlotte Mecklenburg or Wake or Durham has. So, a one-year commitment is what we ask individuals to start with. What we've seen to be successful is normally a three to four-year process. Because if those hadn't figured it out, and you can attest for this, and you can attest for this. Five weeks ago, we only had six superintendency opens throughout the state of North Carolina. Today, we have twelve. It is projected by November of twenty-twenty-three that we could have north of twenty. That's frightening to me, because we're changing leaders at that level. Thus goes superintendents, thus go leadership teams, thus goes teachers. Hold on to this teacher of the year. They're hard to get, they're hard to find. And even more so than that, they're hard to recruit, because when you have good ones, other people have leveraged RISA funds and a lot of different things to say, you know what, we're looking for instructional coaches. And you don't have to live in the county to be our instructional coach. That was your, uh I think that was your, where you did your student teaching at? She would cut you and kill me, so don't do that, okay? So does that answer your question, one to, one-year initial start, and most people do it anywhere from three to four?
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions? Cause I know you have a meeting, you have a pretty full agenda. I wanna listen a little bit longer, so I don't have to just scale out, cause I got a little person. Um but any additional questions?
If not, then, Dr. Griffin, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for your time.
Okay. Taking advice from Dr. Griffin in that this is a commitment, and that it deserves a thought and reflection. It would be my advice to this board that we entertain a motion to table any action, official action on this matter this evening until our April board meeting. Uh just speaking as the chairperson, I think that will give all of us time to reflect and digest come to a, a good decision, whatever that may be individually. And it will also allow members of the public the opportunity to relay their concerns or support. And uh as has been our custom in the past, uh whenever a new item of business is introduced at one meeting, we typically wait until the following or later meetings to take official action. And we'll witness that this evening. But so I would, the chair would entertain a motion to table any action on this item until our April meeting. If some one would be willing to offer that, and if not, this is a time for discussion.
I'll make the motion that we table the um decision until April.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Muma and a second by Mr. Abernathy to table action on this item until the April meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yes, uh Mr. Ring, I'd like to ask the public that was here that heard his presentation to please email, I'm just speaking for myself, email me, if you will, any concerns that you just heard in that specifically. Um, cause I will read every email, cause I want the public, when I issue my vote, I wanna be ho- wholehearted in it for McDowell County, and I wanna represent everyone in McDowell County. So please send me emails and let me know anything that's concerning about that. Because, you know, I'm not saying that it influenced my vote, because one man is the only one that influences my vote. Uh so, but I do wanna read, uh read what every uh citizen wants to say. So please email me if you will.
Just copy us all on that, please.
Well, right. And I think too, just uh Mr. Chairman, if I may, for Ms. Muma, Mr. Mr. Settles, Ms. Puppo, myself, uh we, we started this work over a year ago. Um see a lot of community partners in here that we sat together with and met with. Um and, and we've heard you, and we continue to hear you, and as, as Mr. Settles pointed out, you know, please, please email us, um you know, just with what your opinions are. Um, cause we want to hear them, but at the same time, we, we want to keep moving forward, yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, any further comments, discussion from the board?
I, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I wanna piggyback on both your remarks. Um, it's very important for us as board members, you elect us. And a lot of times, we're torn, we're very torn. Because even though we're, we're supposed to be real intelligent, know everything there is to know about a school system, but we don't. And we got people that, great people, as you said, sir, that run our system, and we have to have faith in them. But being an elected official, please, please give us your true opinion on what you really think. Uh, I personally would love that, and I know it's been said already. And uh, as I told you last time on the video, uh I'm a hardened at the crack, man. I'm da- I'm the doubting Thomas, okay? And not against you, but I, I wanna know what people really think, and I think so.
All right. Any, anyone else? If not, then is all those uh in favor of the motion to table until the April meeting, right hand? And the motion carries unanimously. So, we will move along on the agenda this evening, and next up is Mr. Chris Campbell from Campbell Shatley, uh attorneys at law, who the board voted to engage for, to uh facilitate our superintendent search. And he's here this evening bringing the board some information and to talk generally about how the process will go and what it may look like. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. Superintendent Oliver, how are you, sir?
I'm good, sir. How are you?
Glad you made it back from the county commission meeting.
I, I survived.
Absolutely, absolutely. Board members, it is uh my pleasure to be with you this evening. Um, as I was talking with Mr. Abernathy earlier tonight, I got to say congratulations to the three new board members. It's not often that I'm with you, and that's a good thing, to say that you don't have to see your legal counsel very often. So uh Mr. Oliver and his staff continue to do a wonderful job. But I'm here tonight because we need to talk about something very serious, as you know, from doing board trainings and other things, the most important job you have is to elect a superintendent. Uh it is more important than anything else, because you can pass all the policies you want. You can put all of the focus on academic achievement, you can pass all of the strategic plans in the world. But unless you have a superintendent and under their guidance and leadership that is implementing those things, then your school district is not going to make any progress. And, and if there's one thing that you've been blessed with in recent years here in McDowell County, is stable leadership uh at the superintendent level. And Mr. Oliver certainly to be congratulated for that, and you know that. So tonight begins that process, uh that very serious process of trying to select a new superintendent for the McDowell County schools. The field of school boards looking for superintendents is getting crowded. Um, as uh Dr. Griffin was saying, and it's all very true, right now, there are a lot of school districts that are looking for superintendents and more districts that are coming online with their superintendent searches. Right now, we're assisting the Watauga County Schools, the Transylvania County Schools, and the Cherokee Reservation, Cherokee Central Schools, in looking for superintendents, and just completed about another three or four other, what we call board assisted searches. So before we go through some of the documents I brought with me this evening, let me just remind the board, as your legal counsel, we are not a search firm. We are not headhunters. Uh, just making sure we're all on the same page, cause I didn't have this opportunity to have this conversation with you. We do not have a stable of candidates. I do not have a rolodex of potential superintendents. Uh, we don't make phone calls, we don't encourage people. This is your selection process. Uh, and that has a couple of unique factors to it. First of all, you will be selling McDowell County schools, and the county will sell itself. I think anytime you've got a district the size of McDowell County, you're looking for a certain type of leader. And that certain type of leader will be attracted to McDowell County. I think there's a lot of stability here, a wonderful place to raise a family, and quite frankly, the size of your district, there are a lot of young leaders out there who are looking to take that final step in their career. Uh, so it'd be my hope that in your superintendent search, you would get candidates who not necessarily have been superintendents yet, that are showing that they have the potential, they're ready to step up and be superintendents, but I also would not be surprised if you didn't get a few uh acting or sitting superintendents who are looking for a good place to retire. But it is a very challenging environment out there. I will tell you that we used to say, you could expect anywhere from twenty to twenty-five applications. We're now down to suggesting that you may get twelve, ten to fifteen. Uh, and that's starting to bear out with other districts, that they're not seeing many more applications uh than that for a lot of different reasons. So one of the things that you've got to give some consideration to is the time packet. So what you have in front of you are examples. These are draft timelines for the board to consider, and in working through the activities that you've got to accomplish and the amount of time in which you've gotta look to complete that task. The very first timeline that you have in front of you actually is designed to have a new superintendent sitting in that chair by July first of two thousand and twenty-three. So it's the most aggressive of the timelines is to have a new superintendent sitting there by July twenty-twenty-three. So if you'll just look at the activities that need to be accomplished, that first of all, you would have an application, an advertisement that would already go out. In your packet, you have a draft advertisement for the position and a draft application for the position. So those documents are already in your packet. We would then advertise with the North Carolina School Boards Association, the North Carolina Association of School Administrators. Uh, you can also choose to put the advertisement in education week, and then there are some other optional choices, the most obvious being the American Association of School Administrators, to get a wider net, more of a regional and a national perspective for the application. We like for the application to be out there for six weeks. This timeline basically has it out there about five weeks uh toward the middle, the latter part of the middle part of April, that you would then get all of the applications. That's the other thing about a board assisted search. We are not going to prescreen any applications. And I wanna tell you why we're not gonna prescreen any of the applications. We don't need to prescreen the applications for you board members to know who you're interested in, to know immediately who you want to know more about and who frankly, you're not interested in. I think a lot of times focus, uh boards will focus, and even consulting groups will focus on a vetting process of who you're not interested in. Well, in my opinion, if you are spending even thirty seconds on someone you're not interested in, that's thirty seconds you'll never get back. And thirty seconds you can't apply to the process. What we ask you to do is to look at all of the applications and then come up with a list of individuals, and we throw the number out there of six is a ballpark number, anywhere, you know, in that area, to come to a meeting that you are interested in. And folks, I will tell you, we have now done probably upwards of thirty assisted board superintendent searches in my career. It is uncanny. When you ask board members to bring a list of who they're interested in, then suddenly there are two, three, four candidates that immediately rise to the top. Just about everybody seems interested in those same three to four candidates. So at that point in the process, why spend any time at all talking about three people that all of you seem to wanna know more about? That's a given. Then there are a host of candidates that very few people, maybe one or two of you might be interested in, but a lot of candidates that no one is interested in. So again, why would you spend any time talking about a candidate that no one was interested in? And what you very quickly realize is that in a meeting where you have all the applications sitting in front of you, all of you have taken the time to review those applications, then the discussion is around the three to four folks that you might wanna know more about and to discuss as a school board. And then we use a two-step process, as you'll see in the timeline here. First of all, you tell us who those semifinalists are, so to speak, and we will excuse me, I'm getting over a cold, you can tell. We will do a newspaper background, social media screen on those individuals. so that you've got additional information about them. Pull that information together so that you can come together again and then narrow that list down to who you think you'll want to interview. And let's say you come up with four individuals that you want to interview for superintendence. At that point, we will actually do the background checks and the reference checks on those four individuals. So you will get a notebook on each candidate before you interview them. And I do wish that I could figure it out away and I'm an attorney, you're looking at me and say, well, why don't you figure this out for us to copyright this process? I'm not being completely serious about that. It is a great process then. Why check references after you interview somebody? I know we do it all the time, but think about that for a minute. Why check and talk to the people that worked with Chuck Abernathy as a county manager after you've already interviewed him? Wouldn't it be nice if you were considering him to be your county manager if you talked to five, seven, eight people that had worked with him in that role, got their feedback, got their input before the interview? So you'll actually have a notebook on each candidate that you'll be able to review what folks said about them because that also helps in the interview process. We also do not believe in a straight, structured interview. Yes, you should ask every candidate the same questions, but then you should have a second round and we'll help you through which questions you can't answer from a legal perspective. There's not actually that many and we'll help you with that before the interviews. But you should have a no holds barred follow-up section in interviews because the questions you're going to want to ask me are different than the questions you're going to want to ask another candidate. So you'll have that information, you'll have the structured questions, but then you'll have a set of questions after that you can follow up kind of on critical issues as you think through it. So all of that is designed for you to be conducting these final interviews. Get ready, strap in by May. The good superintendents have a job by May. A lot of the good superintendents know where they are going and the good candidates know where they are going, certainly by the end of May, if a board is looking to hire them by July first. So you can see what I've given you is three different calendars. The first one, again, having superintendent by July first. The second calendar by September first, and I'll speak to that in just a minute. And then the third calendar by January of two thousand and twenty-four. The activities are the same. Obviously, you just have more breathing room in the two later calendars of the one for September and the one for January. September one, why do I put that out there as a potential timeframe? In my experience, a superintendent or someone that wants to come to the McDowell County Schools as superintendent can usually work that out by September one deadline because September one is when a new school year starts. So there is some flexibility there, particularly for candidates that are not sitting superintendents. Okay? So for any candidate who is not a sitting superintendent, is an associate superintendent or assistant superintendent or a principal or a director, they are inherently going to have more flexibility. They will be able to potentially leave to start a new job by September first. A lot of those folks frankly, can even leave mid-year and start a job on January first. So the later you go from a July one start date, in my experience, who do you start to lose? You start to lose sitting superintendent candidates who don't want to leave their school district in the middle of a school year specifically. So yes, in a perfect world, that July one start date is the start date you want. But are you going to lose a significant number of candidates if you were to need to back that up to a September start date? I don't think you'll lose a significant number. If you back that up to a January start date, you are going to, in my experience, lose some candidates who don't want to leave their school district mid-year, particularly if they are a sitting superintendent at that particular point. But the big point I want to make right at this is that, again, this is your process, okay? The general statutes say that you will do one thing, elect a superintendent. The entire general statute on this is one sentence. The board shall elect a superintendent. How you get there and how you do it is completely up to you. So the option or the recommendation that I want to put out to you this evening is pretty straightforward. My recommendation would be that you pursue this first calendar for a July one start date. And in doing so, my typical advice that I give to all boards is that you have the application, you have the advertisement here in your packet, that you would delegate that, final approval of an application, final improvement of an advertisement to your chair and vice chair. That's the, the recommendation I usually make. It's up to you as a board as to how you want to do this, to finalize those procedural steps. So every board member after tonight would have the ability to take these documents home, read the advertisement, read the application and then give your feedback to chair and vice chair so that we can get this application out there as soon as possible. Hopefully by the end of this week, if not certainly the beginning of next week, so that we can get it out there, get it on the street. Then when it comes to, you've also got a survey here. Same process. Would recommend you look at these survey questions. If you want to add or take away survey questions, you would direct those comments to the chair and vice chair and they would give you a deadline by which they would want comments. And then the survey would be available. Next step is soliciting input. And I'm going to give you a whole lot right now and I promise I'll take a breath here in a few minutes and answer your questions. But let's just walk all the way through the process because I think it's easier to do it that way. So let's say that you do decide that you're going to delegate that. Chair and vice chair would finalize the advertisement application. We'd have those out on the street. You would have a week or so, you know, ten days to respond to the survey questions and you could tell chair and vice chair what changes you wanted to the surveys. The next question begins, okay, should you solicit input from your staff in a unique or direct way, specifically your teaching staff, separate and apart from the surveys? Now, I promise you the surveys are anonymous. We use Survey Monkey. It goes through Survey Monkey. We have no idea how folks sign on. We have no access to that information whatsoever. We just get the responses back. But a survey only has certain value. Second of all, it is a public record. And I'm going to keep saying this, this is an entirely public process and you'll see how much it is in just a few minutes. But survey responses are public record as well and we put that right across the survey. So my answer as a parent may be anonymous, but my comments are not. My comments would be available to the entire board and to the community, so we want to make sure folks understand that with a survey. Now, if you want to solicit input from your faculty, from your staff, we've got a district that has just done that and it seems to have been a very good process. What they've decided to do to give teachers and staff a direct voice is they decided to invite a couple of board members, two, three board members at the most, because you can't have a majority. If you have a majority, it's a meeting, to come to a faculty meeting, to come to a faculty meeting at each school and listen. Not to engage in a dialogue, but there to listen to the faculty and their concerns. Is that a confidential, private conversation? Of course not. Anytime you're in the room with other people, it's not a private confidential conversation. But here's the important point that I think your parents need to hear, your community needs to hear, your staff needs to hear. What you are looking for as a board of education is three things. What are the traits? What are the characteristics of the next superintendent? And what are the issues that you think that that next superintendent is going to need to address? So characteristics, traits and issues. It is not a time for people to lodge complaints about their unemployment situation. It's frankly not a time for people to make complaints about their coworkers or their supervisor or their boss. You've got to remind folks at the beginning of this process, you have procedures for that. You have policies, you have grievance procedures. This is a prospect of looking toward the future. And what do we want the characteristics, the traits to be? But you do open that up in what I think is a very inviting environment to faculty members and to teachers. Do it at their school in a faculty meeting. Now, in my experience and my recommendation, you would not direct that the principal has to leave the room, but you would give the principal that decision. They can stay if they want to. If they want their faculty just to have a conversation and some board members to hear it, knowing it's not necessarily a confidential conversation. You know, do they want to stay around? I think sometimes when you ask senior leadership to leave the room, you inadvertently give the wrong message. You know, if, if you're asking someone to leave the room, there's a reason you're asking them to leave the room. And if they're, it, it, you can think what you're doing is trying to create a more open environment. When really you can be giving the message that there may be some concerns about school leadership or we don't think teachers can trust principals. I just think you've got to be very careful in doing that. And if you keep people focused on traits, characteristics and issues, then I'll put it back to you as a rhetorical question, why does anybody need to leave the room? If we're talking about traits, characteristics and issues, then it should be open. So that would be faculty and staff. The principals will get that same opportunity here at the central office at a leadership meeting. You could have those same board members come and sit in on a leadership meeting and hear what the principals have to say. They wouldn't be taking notes on what individuals said. They would be taking notes on the characteristics, traits and issues to bring that back to you as a board. And then finally, you would have community listening sessions and input sessions. Now, how you do that, that is uniquely McDowell County. Uh, you heard discussions about Caldwell County versus Asheville City versus Watauga County. I have represented boards that have had twelve to fifteen listening sessions. I've represented boards that had two, okay? That's a McDowell County decision. Uh, do you want to pick the high school and the community center or have folks come to a board meeting? Or do you want to fan out across the county? I'll tell you that you're only limited by your time and energy. Uh, and the boards that choose to go to community centers, that choose to go to each school or to try to go to each area of the county, sometimes they'll choose to divide that up among board members and try not to make it the full board. I've had other boards say, no, we want to all be there. So we're going to have two listening sessions, one on the eastern end, one on the western end, one on the north, one on the south, however you want to do that. And the entire board's going to be there and we're going to invite com- folks to come, uh, and speak to us. And be ready because sometimes I've seen listening sessions with five community members. I've seen listening sessions with five hundred community members. So it, it all kind of depends on your particular county. So again, I would encourage you, again, this is your process. If you haven't heard me say that already, then we'll say it again. But I would encourage you to think about delegating those specifics, again, to just your chair and vice chair or a small, uh, you know, two individuals or something so that you don't have to continue to come back to the board to talk about the procedural details. Now, that's up to you. That's up to you. And certainly, as your counselor and the, and the, the person who's going to help you through this process, I'm happy to be on the telephone. I'm happy to jump on Zoom so I don't have to come down here. I'll do whatever you want me to do. But I will tell you, when it comes to these procedural details, uh, sometimes it's helpful to just have that chair, vice chair with you folks giving them input to be able to make those decisions. So that's the process. That was a lot and I certainly will stand here as long as I need to, to answer your questions.
Anyone?
Because, because I think you're going to talk, because you go, well.
I think it was an occupational hazard for you in your prior.
I just, I do have a quick question for clarity.
Sure.
And I agree and I appreciate you pointing out that all of this is open and part of our records. Are the interviews with the actual candidates closed?
Great question. Uh, no, this is a closed process.
Okay.
Um, and I've had, I'm trying to think, other than community colleges, I might can think of one school board that chose to do an open process and I think they regretted it. Because folks in K-12 education, the truth is, the, the better candidates have good jobs. And they're in communities and their families are rooted in those communities and their kids are rooted in those communities. And people get real upset when somebody thinks about leaving the community. So if you were to have an open application process where those folks would be known, interviews would be known, I think it would severely limit your applicant pool. So just about every school board does a closed process in order to get more candidates. And no, the interview would just be with the board. And this is a board decision, um, ultimately. But I think what you want from your community, from your teachers, from your educators, uh, and from all of your community leaders is inputs. You want those characteristics, traits and issues from as many folks as you can get.
Mr. Campbell, so if we go with our July first, uh, timeline, we need to get these surveys out as quick as possible, obviously. You said you had, uh, your firm has Survey Monkey, which will give us a link to our, our website. Yeah.
Yep.
It's our link for website, social media and we can share that link everywhere.
You would want to share that link as far and as wide as you can. All the community partners you've been working with, the folks that you've already been speaking with as board members, you'd want to share it with as many folks as you can. Uh, in Transylvania County, we actually have somebody that we've contracted with to do a Spanish version of the survey and to translate the answers from Spanish back to English for benefits of, of the board members. So we've already got a lot of that in place, but it's a link that can be shared very widely. The other thing it does is one of the very first questions it will do, and you'll see what you've got as an example of the survey from Transylvania County here. You can identify in what capacity you're associated with the school district. So we can break it down by parent answers, employee answers, community answers, things of that nature. And again, you're looking for broad, broad, you know, uh, broad strokes, uh, in, in terms of issues that are facing your community. So that's good information to have, to kind of break it down, uh, in that respect, so you can kind of see what, how different constituencies feel about things.
Based on your timeline here, is there a date where that survey will close? That we should be looking at closing that survey?
Those are the kind of details that I would encourage you, if you're comfortable with it, trying to, instead of trying to decide those things as a full board, have the confidence to let a couple of folks decide those procedural issues so that you can get going. You don't have a whole lot of time. Uh, in fact, I, I really encourage you, you know, to the extent you're comfortable to delegate things to a couple of board members, maybe chair and vice chair, so we can get things out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, just for a little bit of clarity, um, I really appreciate the three different timeframes. That's wonderful. Thank you. So if we, if we went all the way through, um, April twenty-first and then we had a called meeting, I'm saying on April twenty-fifth and we're not impressed, we can go to a different timeline.
You can not only go to a time- different timeline, you can say you're going to put it on the shelf, uh, for a little bit longer. I think again, one of the blessings you have is an interim superintendent to,
We have a blessing.
As far as I can tell, is not going to abandon his post.
Right.
Uh, until this board says that, uh, you're ready. Now, there are limits to that. Um, I, I feel compelled to say that on your behalf, Ms. Scholber. But yes, if, uh, if you were to get applications and if you decided that you did not see the kind of quality application you wanted, you could actually stop the process and re-advertise later.
So, so the biggest things for us moving forward, the nine of us, is basically getting to April twenty-fifth.
That's correct.
And then if we need to, we could slow things down. But from now until April twenty-fifth, we need to move with haste.
Right.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Anyone, anyone else?
Real quick, um, so you're not requiring a P, or we're not requiring a PhD or an EDD, but it's favored.
Correct. We do not recommend requiring that.
Is that now a norm or is that more normal than it used to be?
It is certainly more normal than it used to be. Um, and I think that what boards are realizing is that there are a couple of things at play. One is non-traditional paths into education, educational leadership, that does occur. But I think more importantly is that the reasons why some people may not be able to pursue a doctorate earlier in their careers, those individuals tend to get to a place in their career where they frankly, don't feel like they need the doctorate. And if you and I were to both look at their application, their level of experience, talk to their references, we might agree. Some of the best superintendents I have ever worked with have been mister's and miss's instead of doctors. So we don't think you should limit yourself at all to the PhD or the EDD.
So, so real quick, maybe a silly question. Is there a way to communicate in the advertisement that you are open to that mid-level or assistant superintendent in another community or perhaps a, a candidate that's got their EDD underway?
Absolutely. And the best way to do that is just to say it. To say that, you know, that McDowell County Schools and the size of McDowell County Schools makes it an optimal school district for leaders who are looking to prove themselves in the superintendency and, and, and just say it. Just put it as part of the advertisement that we welcome, you know, both. And, and you wouldn't want to limit yourself. But the McDowell County Schools welcomes experienced superintendents. You may want to bring that superin- that experience to bear in McDowell County. And we're also excited to accept applications from rising school leaders and those that feel like they are ready for the superintendency. I think it's a great idea because I think then you are broadcasting, a lot of times folks, they want to know whether or not a community is going to be open to individuals from outside the community. And I think when you say it, like you just said it, I think you, you send that signal that yes, we are open to individuals from other places who are ready to prove their leadership and that's what we're looking for. I think that would be a great addition to the, to the advertisement.
Third and final, kind of piggybacking on Amy's.
Third and final, kind of piggybacking on Amy's comment, Ms. Mummell, the, the aggressive timeline. I think, in my mind, I've, uh, again, I've been here three months. I, I would have said, well, there's no real reason to, to be aggressive, but I think there probably is. Because of the numbers of, of vacancies, uh, it probably puts us in a situation where we might do better hurrying along and, and getting an early start.
Yes.
So I appreciate your being here, and I'm glad we've never met.
As I say to most of my clients, I hope I see you in the grocery store.
It's a real compliment.
It is. It's a compliment in your leadership. Uh, we can, Mr. Oliver and I can do most things in a ten-minute phone call, and that's a wonderful thing to be able to do.
Anyone else?
So to be blunt, uh, with the get-going attitude, uh, I, I would recommend you consider adopting the more aggressive timeline and delegating the procedural details to the chair and vice chair with input from every board member. And you will, you will know, and again, these are procedural details and, and soliciting input, things of that nature. This is nothing substantive. Every application will come to you.
Does that require an official action?
I would take that as an official action if I was your Mr. Chair, just to be clear for the record.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion that we accept this timeline for July first, as, uh, Mr. Campbell, Campbell presented it.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Shuford seconds, and does that also include board designees of chair and vice chair to consult with Mr. Campbell's firm?
I think the easiest thing is if that's up to Mr. Suddles, whether he wants to add that or wants to have a little bit more conversation about that. We can do it either way.
Thanks for looking at me, guy. Yeah, does anyone want to be a part of that process? Is anybody?
Well, e- everyone will be a part of it.
No, you guys, you guys, you guys.
Well, is there anyone, uh, from the board that is not the chair and vice chair that would like to be very specifically a part of that portion of this process? Okay, then I think that it's fair to add that too.
So I would like to designate the chair and co-chair.
Okay.
To be that person that talks to Mr. Campbell.
All right.
If Mr. Shuford would take that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
He does? Okay. So, uh, Ms. Smith, would you read back to the board and the public the motions?
Or would you like for me to restate it, Ms. Smith? Mr. Chair, I believe the motion we all just heard was for the, uh, board to accept the superintendent search timeline to elect a new superintendent by July one of two thousand twenty-three, as presented in open session, and to delegate to the chair and vice chair the authority with input from the full board to set the procedural details of the search.
All right.
That's what I meant.
That's what, that's what I heard, Mr. Suddles.
All right. So we, you've heard the motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion upon the motion? If not, then all in favor.
I just want to say, um, I, I'm grateful that we're, that we're doing this, this quickly. I mean, I know that in the past that we've talked about it, and Mr. Oliver has been very gracious to give us a full year, um, for this process, but we want to honor that too. But, you know, it is, I, I'm grateful that you brought this forward, gave us a timeline that we could use. That is realistic for us to look at a July one, um, because we, we've already been a full year without the permanent person. And so I, um, thank you, Mr. Oliver, uh, for being willing to step in, but I'm, I'm grateful. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Campbell.
Anyone else? Comments? Discussion? If not, then discussion will close, and all those in favor of the motion signify with your right hand, and the motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. All right, we'll move along with the agenda, and at this time, uh, we've come to that portion where we have administrative reports, and our esteemed colleague and superintendent, Mr. Brian Oliver, would you, uh, deliver that for us?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Ms. Mummell, members of the board, honored guests, and members of the community, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your taking time to attend our meeting and caring about what's important for McDowell County schools. So thank you for being here tonight. So since our last official meeting, I had the opportunity, we had our leadership team meeting at North Cove this past month, and our upcoming meeting will be at Pleasant Gardens this month. Um, McDowell High School hosted the Mountain Athletic Conference Basketball Tournament, uh, for the first time in several years, and uh, one note, uh, from our basketball season, uh, we had several student athletes who were named to all-conference teams. But we also had a coach who was named the Coach of the Year in the Mountain Athletic Conference. So, um, we're really proud of Coach McCarthy and his efforts. He's worked really hard with the team, and he was named the Coach of the Year for the Mountain Athletic Conference. But we're proud of him. I had the chance to attend the West Risa Superintendent's Council Meeting at, uh, Western Carolina University of Biltmore, and that's always a great meeting. Uh, Mr. Campbell attends those regularly, and he was one of our briefers at the last meeting, and, uh, always provides us with some really good wisdom that we take back and hopefully, um, stay out of trouble and do good things. Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, had a chance to be part of the Amazing Shake competition at the Marion Event Center, and, uh, what a great event. Those students, uh, just do a great job, and really proud of how they do. And we have some students who came today to prepare for their next, uh, event, um, in Atlanta. I think it's in Atlanta when they go to compete, so we wish them well. Uh, had the opportunity to attend the Old Ford one fifty kickoff celebration event at Old Ford Elementary, and that was a, a really nice event. Several board members attended, got to learn a lot more about the history of Old Ford and, uh, all the things that are coming up in the hundred-and-fiftieth year of the town of Old Ford. Um, I had the chance to attend the YMCA presentation at Pleasant Gardens Elementary School, uh, which, uh, was an opportunity for them to share with, uh, elected officials at the state and local level about the opportunities that they provide, uh, in our community. And we just, we have a great partnership with YMCA, and they do a lot. We have partnerships with a lot of folks that are here tonight, too. Um, but the YMCA does a great job with, uh, with a lot of those programs. Tended the Joint Education Committee meeting with, uh, Chairman and Vice Chair, and that's always, uh, a treat to sit down with county officials and also the community college president and board members and talk about education in McDowell County. And that's a great group that you have advocating for students in institutions here in the county. So I'd be thankful for that. Um, I visited the Slat- the Splash Program at the YMCA, which is, uh, an introduction to water safety and swimming, uh, that's for second graders at the YMCA. And it, what a great program. Those students just have so much fun, and, uh, plenty of supervision, lifeguards on standby, and it's a great program. So if you get a chance to go see that sometime, please do, the students love it. Um, on Read Across America Day, I had the opportunity to read at Nebo and West Marion, and always a treat to spend time with students and get to read. And, uh, if you want to brighten your day, just go spend a few minutes with some students. It'll brighten your day, I promise you. Um, I had a chance to attend the sec- or third annual convening of community college presidents and superintendents in Greensboro. And this was a day and a half event where, um, community college presidents and the superintendents of uh, the local education agencies who work with those colleges get to, uh, sit together and talk about things that are going well around the state, and also learn from other folks what they're doing well, and also talk about issues that everyone needs to work together to address at state level. Great event. Uh, last week was National School Breakfast Week, so I hope that everyone had a chance to encourage their student to enjoy, uh, school breakfast provided at school. And, uh, our, our school nutrition folks do a great job supporting our students and our staff, and we're proud of them. Last Tuesday, I attended the meeting with the State Superintendent in Jackson County, Silva. And, uh, that was just for the superintendents here in the West Risa, and that was a really good event. Chance for us to hear from the State Superintendent and also share with her any concerns or issues we'd like her to take back to Raleigh. We had our state tornado drill last Wednesday, and I think everyone, I think only the high school had to have theirs on a different day, or maybe Greg knows. Was it all three high schools or just MHS?
All three.
Okay, so Greg's our, uh, district testing coordinator, and, uh, all three of the high schools had to do the ACT on that day. So they had to move theirs, they couldn't do it on Wednesday. But every school in the district did execute a tornado drill, and we appreciate that. Uh, last Thursday, attended the twenty-twenty-three Bigfoot Festival Planning Meeting, um, with the, that was led by the city, and, uh, obviously, that's a big event for the city of Marion. It's, uh, a lot of planning goes into that. It's pretty, pretty impressive what all goes into that effort. So that was a good start for that process for this year. And then Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Lake James State Park Visitor Center. And if you haven't seen that, go out and see it. It's impressive. It's, it's amazing. So everyone in this room needs to go take advantage of that. And I promise you that we're going to encourage our teachers and students to get out there and enjoy that, that visitor center. There, it's a tremendous facility, and it's available to everyone, so take advantage of it. It's a, it's a great facility. Couple of things that aren't on there today, uh, we had our, we'll probably hear more about the Head Start Council, but I'll, I'll let Ms. Silver say more, but always a great meeting. Dr. Delaney does a great job with that. And, uh, this afternoon at five o'clock, I was invited to attend the County Commissioners' meeting so that we could brag on our four brand-new national certified, national board-certified teachers that we rep- that we re- uh, recognized last month at our February meeting. Had the opportunity to recognize those four teachers today with the County Commissioners, so great opportunity. It's always nice to brag on our folks, and we got to do that tonight, too. So always welcome that opportunity. Ms. Chairman, that's all I have at this time.
Okay. Did you forget anything?
Probably.
See, you've been a busy fella. So, uh, I suppose one of the qualities of a superintendent would be stamina. Uh, we'll move along then to unfinished business, and the first item is the tennis court and multipurpose field project, and I'm not sure if, uh, Mr. Oliver, if you want to lead the conversation on that, or, or Mr. Suddles?
Yes, sir. I'm finding that unless. Okay, sir. Uh, so we had our pre-bid opening meeting at, uh, on February the fourteenth. Uh, pardon me, February twenty-eighth. And, and the bid opening meeting is tomorrow. So we'll have our bid opening meeting tomorrow afternoon. And so I know that, and on the end of the night, at the, the end of our agenda tonight, there's a discussion about, we will need a special call meeting in the very near future to consider those. And I think there might be some talk about wanting, uh, maybe the finance committee to meet prior to that.
We, we, I talked, did talk with Mr. Frank, our chairman, and he felt like that probably the great majority of the finance committee members would be at a special call meeting. So he, he didn't see any, uh, need to call a meeting of the committee.
So I guess later, you want to do that now or later tonight? Um, establish a special call meeting at the end of the week?
We can do that now, or we can wait at the end? I tell you, since it's on the agenda, at the end, let's, let's wait until that time, too.
Yes, sir.
Folks can be thinking about it.
Chairman, I, the reason I, I, you know, I relate to you is we get to see what the bids are, and we'll know what kind of money we need to deal with after we see bids. And that's why I say later than prior.
Right.
So you'll send the bids out, a listing of, you had four bidders, and this, this is the, their bid, and you'll let us all know? It's just curious.
Yes, sir. Well, once we have the bids open tomorrow, I'll create a list that I'll share with the chairman, and then the chair and vice chair will determine when we send that out to the whole board. It may be instantaneous.
I would have no objection to the board, you know, for the members.
Same, immediately.
Did, did you have good participation?
Yes. Sir, you want to speak to that? We had great numbers.
Yeah, it was probably one of the biggest turnouts for a bid that I've seen, uh, especially in McDowell County. I think we had maybe nine to eleven companies represented. Really good.
It was a, it was a good turnout.
That's good.
I was surprised. I mean, pleasantly surprised, but it was a great turnout.
All right. So the bid opening is tomorrow at what time?
At, uh, two-thirty, sir.
Two-thirty, PM. And so probably by tomorrow afternoon late, you can check your school email and should have, uh, an accounting of that.
And of course, that, that meeting is, uh, is run by the, by the architect.
Right.
We'll work with them to create that list, provide that back to the board.
All right. So if not tomorrow evening, uh, next day?
Hopefully tomorrow evening, but if not, the very next morning.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll move along then to proposed twenty-twenty-three's dash twenty-twenty-four school calendars, and, um, I'll let Mr. Oliver and Ms. Silver, our calendar committee representative, uh, speak to those if, if they need speaking to.
Ma'am, do you have anything you'd like to say about the proposed calendar?
No, um, just that, once again, and we'll, and we'll address this a little bit right after this, but, um, just for, for the public and for our staff to remember that a lot of our calendar decisions were made for us at the state level, and we had to work with what we had, but we'll address that in just a bit. But the other thing that, that I've just been approached, you know, by our staff to just remember is just the integrity of work days, and to give them the opportunity, if it's a work day and it's not designated as professional development, to give them the opportunity to work in the classrooms.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they have been inundated.
We've had a, we've had a lot of required PD.
Yes.
The past two years, for sure.
That's one thing, um, I, I had a question about, because I, I'm not sure why we went away from it. How come our calendar doesn't have a list of designated optional work days?
Sir, we just don't say the word optional, but if it's a work day that's not a PD day, then teachers have the option to use annual leave.
Okay, because this is going to come up here in a few minutes.
A, a principal can designate a work day as a PD day or required attendance work day, but they have to do that fourteen days in advance. Uh, if it's on the calendar as a work day.
Okay.
Then that, that means that teachers may use annual leave, unless, and the, the, the PD days are actually stated as PD.
Okay. I'm looking at it, I want to make sure. So, for instance, the June tenth through the fourteenth are optional work days because they're not listed as PD?
That's right, yes, sir. If, if teachers have annual leave, then they may use annual leave on those days.
So the email that went out in front of, for the teachers that said everyone must participate in our new summer program is not accurate if they have annual leave time?
I'm not sure what email you're referring to, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll just cover when we get to the next part of it. I'm just saying it would help if we listed as optional teacher work days, but you have, because you're saying anything that's not PD is optional unless fourteen days ahead of time it's said to be a PD day?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the, what I hear, though, is that you're saying that teachers can take that as an optional, like, vacation day, but.
If they have leave, yes, ma'am.
If they have leave, but the principal has fourteen days prior to say, I want this to be PD. And so that teacher then is required to be there for PD at that point in time?
That, or they would have to work out the details with the principal. If they already had a, if they already had a requirement that, that they can't break.
And, and that's one thing, I appreciate both of you guys pointing that out. That's something that was reiterated many times during the calendar committee meeting. Because, you know, people do look at school calendars and go ahead and make plans to be out of town. And, and this is just, you know, a, a personal commentary. Um, i- if you've got plans to be out of town and you've made reservations to be out of town, two weeks is really short notice to have to change. two weeks is really short notice to have to change your plans. But that is one thing that, that we did continue to reiterate, and we, we heard what our staff said is that if it's not on the calendar as a professional development day, can we not have professional development on those days? And again, you know, the older that you get, those annual leave days are not just, um, being able to take that day off, they can be converted to go towards your retirement as well, so that's one thing.
Usually, your more senior teachers are less likely to use leave later in their career.
Because they can convert that as they retire, but that, again, you know, and I'm looking at other people that were at that meeting, that's something that we talked extensively about, especially looking on the last three years with Horton Gillingham and Letters Training and some of the professional development at our secondary level as well. We, we've got to be mindful that if we put on there, "You have a work day and you have the option to work it or not," that, that's just something we've got to hear what our staff is saying, and they are drowning.
I've had several teachers email, the reason I ask, I had several teachers email me and ask me that specific thing because number one, they did put a deposit down on their vacation time. And in a time when we're trying to retain teachers, we want to keep them here. We don't want to encourage them to not, to work this, not get your deposit back, be upset at us. I mean, so getting them to understand what you've already said, that they, if they've already got prior engagements, they can talk to the principal, we can work this out, because we want to retain our teachers. And especially post-COVID right now, it's still trying to get that whole mental aspect back, and maybe the beach of seven days will give you that desire to come back and to do the best you can for us.
Yes, sir, and sir, we, we certainly recognize the, uh, the tough, um, ask that Letters Training was probably over half of our teaching staff in the county. Letters Training was a state mandated requirement. We happen to be placed in the first cohort. Now, the good news is, we went through it.
They're done.
We've accomplished it.
They did it.
So now, the only folks that will need Letters Training are the folks that are new to the county or new to the state. Well, definitely new to the state and possibly new to the county will need it. But there's also an effort in the, in the near future that Letters Training will be provided by the universities and the education educator preparation programs at our state schools, so, and, and hopefully, it will move into the private schools as well. But that's not happening yet, but in the near future, that will happen in college, and they won't have to do that, um, after they're employed by, by one of the districts. So that's been a really tough ask for our teachers, we know that, it was hard, it was a lot of work. And it, it did mandate some days that we were pretty inflexible with, because we, we had to be, because it was a state requirement. But our, our principals are extremely mindful of folks having a life, and most of them are going to work really hard with their staff members to honor anything that they have scheduled. If it was scheduled in the out, you know, in the previous weeks, then they had no knowledge of a change in the calendar.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Silver, for all your work on the calendar.
All right, sir. Anything else? If not, then is there a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to approve the, the three calendars that were presented, um, one for the traditional calendar, one for Eastfield, and one for the early college and MIA.
Okay, Ms. Silver makes the motion, Mr. Shuford makes the second, any further discussion? If not, then all in favor, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Uh, next item under unfinished business, and this is one that was presented to the board at last month's meeting, is a board resolution supporting local control of school calendars. And Ms. Silver, since you introduced it to the board at the last meeting, would you, you care to, uh, speak to that, and perhaps you could read the resolution? I know it's two pages, three pages, but, uh...
Mr. English, I think it would be considered an honor for me to be able to share my commentary on the North Carolina state calendar law.
Now, save your voice, Beth, because you've got three pages to read, okay?
And I'm, I got very nervous, because I thought, "Please don't leave, please don't leave, please don't leave." Because I, I really want our community, and especially our community partners, to understand. People want to know how you can help McDowell County schools, this is exactly how you can help McDowell County schools. We have a senator and we have two representatives that you can contact, Senator Warren Daniel, Representative Jake Johnson, and Representative Dudley Green, to let them know that McDowell County schools deserves the opportunity, as do the other hundred and ten school systems in the state of North Carolina, to set their own parameters for how they want to educate their kids. So I appreciate the fact that you're all here, but I want you to leave tonight, depending on what time it's over, uh, and shoot an email, make a phone call, and just say what's going to be in the very first line of the resolution that I'm going to read. We deserve to be able to do what's best for our kids. That's why all of us are here, and that's why all of you are out there, because we want to do what's best for our children. And that doesn't need to come out of Raleigh, that needs to come out of right here. So with that being said, Mr. English, I'd like to share a resolution, um, that we had some help from our, our buddies at, at Campbell and Shatley to, um, to word this. Whereas the North Carolina law provides the McDowell County Board of Education powers of supervision and control of the public schools located within McDowell County. Whereas local control over establishing school calendars is an integral component of the school system supervision and the administrative powers with which the McDowell County Board of Education has been vested. Whereas in two thousand and four, the North Carolina General Assembly set a statewide mandatory start and end date for all school districts, which is known as the School Calendar Law. Whereas the North Carolina Journal Assembly amended the local school calendar law in two thousand and twelve to further restrict the starting date for schools. Whereas the mandated school start date is no earlier than the Monday closest to August twenty-sixth, and the end date is no later than the Friday closest to June eleventh. Whereas the School Calendar Law resulted in schools starting no earlier than August twenty-ninth for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and no earlier than August twenty-eighth for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Whereas a late August start date means that the schools within McDowell County are unable to complete the first semester until mid to late January. Whereas the School Calendar Law requires high school students to take first semester exams after the winter break, which negatively impacts students and faculty and further is an inefficient use of instructional time. Whereas the School Calendar Law does not align with community colleges and university calendars, making it nearly impossible for high school students, who will graduate at the end of the first semester, to enroll in college courses in January, because college courses start before or at the same time as the high school students complete final exams. Whereas exams for advanced placement classes are given on the same day nationwide, and the current calendar law shortens the amount of time that McDowell County students have to learn the material and prepare for the exam. Whereas it is well documented through multiple studies that children will experience a phenomenon known as learning loss during breaks, which has a disproportionate impact on low-income children. Whereas with little flexibility built into the calendar, scheduling makeup days is extremely challenging, increasingly, increasing the likelihood of using unpopular days like spring break and Saturdays as makeup days. Whereas with little flexibility built into the calendar, scheduling work days and professional development during the school year for faculty and staff is almost impossible during the fall semester and remains challenging in the spring semester despite the significant increase in areas which faculty and staff are required by law to receive training, for example, letters. Whereas fall sports and band programs have not changed to coincide with the state mandated school calendar, causing some football and band events to occur before school begins. Whereas neither charter schools nor private schools are required to follow the state calendar law. Whereas allowing schools to start earlier in August will not impact the overall length of the summer break, as the school year will also end earlier. Whereas parents overwhelmingly support a school calendar where the fall semester ends in December. Whereas local school boards are better equipped to understand the balancing act of meeting the community's needs and maximizing student success. Whereas restoring local control to school calendars will allow the McDowell County Board of Education to meet the calendar preferences of McDowell County's families, educators, and businesses in our community, while allowing for innovative experimental approaches to improve student achievement and... Whereas on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, the North Carolina House Select Committee on an Education System for North Carolina's Future issued its finding that the current school's calendar law is not best suited to the needs of students and educators, and the local boards of education should be given greater calendar flexibility. The Select Committee recommended the, quote, "General Assembly take action and change the school calendar law." Now therefore, be it resolved that the McDowell County Board of Education supports an amendment to the current school calendar law, providing local school boards more flexibility in the start date of the school calendar, and be it further resolved that, one, the chair and superintendent are authorized to disseminate this resolution to members of the North Carolina Legislature, and, two, the board would encourage parents, students, and other community members to contact their North Carolina legislators to advocate for calendar flexibility. And, three, the board requests that McDowell County Commissioners and other local governments within McDowell County to adopt a resolution advocating calendar flexibility.
All right. Is there a, a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution. Sorry.
I'd like to second that.
All right, so Ms. Silver makes a motion to adopt. Ms. Mumo makes a mo, uh, seconds that motion, is there any discussion? If not, then all in favor of that motion, right hand, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all, thank you all.
Mr. English, do we need to stay around afterward and sign that?
Uh, yes, yes, Ms. Smith, uh, has the original to be, uh, signed. Okay, new business, item number thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Head Start Grant Application. Ms. Delaney, I'm sure Ms., well, in fact, I know that Ms. Smith, uh, distributed the information on this and policies and procedures, which is the next item, to each member electronically.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, we, we've all had time to pore over every word.
Then I can make it short and sweet.
Got it.
I frightened them back there, I showed them my folder. Every word of it, I'm just kidding. Thank you, though, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Mr. Oliver, thank you for this opportunity again to stand before you tonight to talk about Head Start and talk about some wonderful things that are going on in Head Start and some exciting news that has been added to our grant application package. So as Mr. Chairman did say, you did receive that folder with all of these documents in that folder, so I hope you've had the opportunity to look over those. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those questions for you or clarify any of the documents that you were provided. But for, um, for the minutes and for clarification, I'm just going to read briefly the documents that you were provided in that folder so that it can be approved as a whole grant application package, so that you can only vote, you can only have to vote on that one time.
Thank you.
Um, so the first item that I am presenting tonight is the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Grant Application Package. This is our third year of our five-year grant cycle for Head Start. And so that grant application package did include the cost allocation plan, school readiness goals, selection criteria, self-assessment summary, results of the self-assessment and program improvement plan, training and technical assistance plan, part one and part two, the training and technical assistance narrative, travel plan justification, the Head Start Annual Report, organizational chart, budget justification, community assessment, strategic plan, the grant application and narrative, a cost of living adjustment increase, quality improvement funding increase, and our twenty-three, twenty-four pay scales. And so, um, the third year of this grant application did not have any major changes. The only changes were updates to our program goals to reflect progress and growth that we have made over the past year, and it did reflect updates in our budget. So you were provided a copy of the cost of living funding increase and the quality improvement increase, and that was provided to us Thursday night at like nine-thirty at night. And so we worked on that all day Friday to be able to get that out into that folder for you. But the Office of Head Start did provide a cost of living increase for all employees of a five-point-six percent funding permanent increase. And then they did give us a pot of quality improvement money, that they highly encouraged us to use that to increase staff wages as well. So we're able to take that quality improvement and, and supply an additional three percent permanent increase, totaling an eight-point-six percent increase for Head Start staff.
Good, good for them.
Um, so that does give us a, a total budget of, before the cost of living and, uh, quality improvement was two million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars, with an additional one hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-one for the cost of living and quality improvement. Can I answer any questions for you about any of those documents?
We just appreciate your dedication, and, and it's awesome that those employees who are our lower-paid staff are, are getting an opportunity to get some money. Hats off to you.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much. I did not mind starting to work on that at nine-thirty on Thursday night, all the way till, um, about nine-thirty on Friday night, trying to get those completed, it was a, it was a privilege to be able to do that, so that staff can get that increase.
Thank you so much for your dedication, I, you're, you're just so committed to your staff and those students, and we really appreciate that, thank you very much, thank you.
It was an exciting email at nine-thirty.
That was an exciting email, I like nine-thirty emails like that.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Head Start Grant Application is presented by Dr. Delaney?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Head Start Grant Application is presented by Dr. Delaney.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, a motion by Ms. Silver, a second by Mr. Settles to approve the Head Start Grant Application. Any further discussion, questions, anyone need clarification? If not, all in favor, right hand, and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Now we'll move along to the Head Start policies and procedure that also require school board approval. And Ms. Delaney, would you care to tell the public why they need school board approval if it's a federal program?
Absolutely, um, for many of you, you know, if you do not know, um, Head Start can be funded and can be a grantee of many different, um, locations, it can be a private facility, that is the grantee for Head Start. It can be a community action, which is the majority of what Head Start programs are, are under the grantee umbrella of. Um, there are eighteen now in the state of North Carolina that is in, under a school system grantee. So if you are under a school system grantee, all, um, decisions, changes, policies do have to be approved by the school board. Um, we do follow all of the school board policies and procedures, but Head Start does require that we write policies and procedures about some additional things. Last month, I did bring to you that COVID-nineteen mitigation policy, that is one of the additional things that we have to put into those policies and procedures, um, over and beyond what is in the school board policies and procedures. So I did provide you in that folder an executive summary of the changes that were made to those policies and procedures so that you did not have to go through three hundred pages of policies and procedures. You were provided that executive summary that noted all of the changes that were made, and there were just a few of them. Be happy to answer any questions about them if you have them.
Any questions for Dr. Delaney? If not, then is there a motion to approve Head Start policies and procedures?
I'll make a motion this time, that we accept the policy and procedures that's presented by Ms. Delaney, Dr. Delaney.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms.?
Helms.
Tell me how you prefer it, Angela.
Alan hyphen Helms.
Ms. Alan hyphen Helms. That's hard to get used to writing that. Uh, makes the second, so we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Any questions? If not, then all in favor, and the motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Very much, thank you.
All right, and so the next item is the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, which is this school year, Summer Program Plan. And Ms. Crystal Hamby, our, uh, curriculum and instruction.
Well, she's a lot of things, sir, but, uh, she's our executive director of elementary and federal programs.
Man, that is a lot of things. Summer Program Plan.
Yes, sir, good evening, Mr. English, uh, Mr. Oliver, and Ms. Mumo, and the other board members. Uh, thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity. Uh, thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to stand here before you this evening on the behalf of the elementary secondary team. At this time, we are seeking Board approval as required by the state to provide summer, uh, learning opportunities, what we call Take-Two Camp here in McDowell, for students who need to score proficient on the third through eighth grade end-of-grade assessment or our high school students on their end-of-course exams. During Take-Two Camp, students can attend remediation as well as retake the end-of-grade or end-of-course assessment. Upon approval tonight from the Board, the camp will occur at each elementary school or each secondary location. Students would arrive at eight, receive breakfast and lunch, and transportation will be provided as needed. Take-Two Summer Camp will be funded, uh, if funds are needed, uh, through our ESER funds. Twenty percent of our ESER funds do need to go towards learning loss, and this would fall into that category. Take-Two Camp is currently, uh, proposed to take place for third through eighth grade students June the twelfth through the fifteenth, and for high school students, June the nineteenth through the twenty-third and the twenty-sixth through the thirtieth. So at this time, I'm open to any questions if you have questions about camp or I am seeking, uh, Board approval, uh, for this summer learning opportunity.
Ms. Ms. Hamby, thank you for the presentation. So who, number one, who's teaching these classes? And second, are the ESER funds to pay the teachers that are doing that?
So, um, we, uh, spoke with principals and, uh, chose the week immediately following. A lot of times if we do a, a break during that time, our students that really need to be back to reassess will not return. And so, uh, during that week of June the twelfth through the fifteenth, those are teacher workdays that teachers can choose, uh, to participate in camp. Because that's already currently inside the contracted hours, ESER funds would not be needed except for Eastfield, because they would already be out of session after the first two days. Uh, for our high school, the nineteenth through the thirtieth, yes, ESER funds would be available to pay staff.
Okay, so no extra pay for the first session, but ESER pay for the next one. Um, I guess my next question is because I've, I've received a lot of emails from administrators, uh, that, an email went out that was saying that no extra pay for this, that everyone needs to participate during this week in some fashion.
Those are optional teacher workdays.
Okay, so those, so any administrator, any principal that sent this letter out needs to send another letter out saying that these are optional teacher workdays, and that in, anyone has a problem being there for this, then they just need to let her know that.
That is correct.
Okay.
Those are optional teacher workdays. Now, as Mr. Oliver mentioned earlier about professional development days, we can do notifications, but whether or not a teacher choose to participate during summer school, um, I'm going to defer that to Mr. Oliver, but it's my understanding those are optional teacher workdays. Now, we can do ESER pay for teachers if they choose to take annual leave day, but because it's already inside the contracted time, then of course we cannot double pay.
Okay. Just some of the emails that I read didn't sound like some of the principal's words that I've heard before, so I didn't know if this was a generic thing that was going across to everyone, the teachers. And there were some complaints that they had vacations already, but they felt like that, number one, our teachers don't want to let down the principal or the children.
Right.
So they want, if they're asked to do this, they want to do it, but they're in conflict now. So I just wanted to make sure that we support these teachers.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? What about our Teacher of the Year? Is Take-Two Summer Learning Program valuable?
It is valuable. I do, the same concern, I mean, there's a couple of candidates that have been applications already.
Mm-hmm. I, we know. You, you just work all the time.
Have we ever, have we ever had Take-Two the week after, right after?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. It's always been that week. Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. And Take-Two is an opportunity for students that are so close.
Yes, sir. That is a, that's correct. So we, uh, are, uh, required to provide, to provide remediation during that time and then give them a second opportunity if their parents and the student, so chooses, there's no punishment if they choose not to participate, but it is an option. And we do pick up quite a bit. It is very beneficial for our students, a lot of times just to see it the second time around. So our data does support that it is very beneficial that we provide them with this opportunity.
Okay. Anything else on the Summer Program Plan? If not, then is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Ms. Mumal makes the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Schuford makes the second. Is there any further discussion? Questions or comments? If not, then all in favor of the motion, right hand? And the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Hamby.
Next item is Board Reports. And, uh, I guess, uh, it would be appropriate for me to begin, and I will end up after everyone else has made their reports. But, uh, uh, if you recall, uh, a few weeks ago, um, our administrative assistant, Ms. Smith, was, uh, able to attend the training session sponsored by School Board Association. And down there, she was, uh, telling me that, uh, they were covering the agenda and what's appropriate for this section or that section or whatever. And, uh, Ms. Smith, maybe you could kind of, I know you touched on Board Reports, could you kind of bring us up to date on what you learned there as to what Board members should or should not include in Board Reports?
No, also the first year of the conference.
No, you're, you're, he, he is not the administrative assistant. He did not take the training.
I second everything Miss Smith. Oh, I did have, obviously, thank you to attend the, of course, the conference, which I obtained a lot of good knowledge. Um, but if they were assessing Board Reports and, um, how it should be used for that purpose, were you to report on, um, a committee for?
School visit?
School visit, something of that nature, not to bring new business into Board Reports.
Okay.
So, exactly. That's right there.
That, that is typically is kind of an update, you know, there are committee recommendations. Those, of course, would be part of new business. So that's my, okay. But certainly these are, these are as bright a line as a key that are on the table.
Oh, sure.
As I've always said, the main thing is the committee's class is what the Board's interested in, set for future meeting or future debate.
And while we're on the subject of Ms. Smith, I have to compliment her and Mr. Garrett Berryhill, our Technology Director. If you've been on the McDowell County Schools webpage lately, you'll notice that in a line across the top of the page, that it does announce when our meetings will be, and it will also announce any special call meetings that may be called. And, uh, in talking with Ms. Smith and Mr. Berryhill over the past several months, uh, that's one of the small tweaks that have been made to make our website more accessible to members of the public that may not be familiar with our website. If you knew where to look beforehand, you could find it. But if you've never visited our website before, you were really lost. So, uh, I appreciate Ms. Smith and Mr. Berryhill, uh, attending to that.
Mr. English, uh, let me ask this too. So, Mr. Berryhill, they can also watch it on YouTube Live now, correct? You can see everything on there?
Yes, sir.
So if you want to stay home and eat strawberry shortcake and still watch what's going on, you can do that. No, but I see it there, and I want to make sure everybody's aware that you can see us in person and hear everything going on.
That's correct.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
And then it's there, uh, after its live stream, it's recorded and it's there for anyone that wants to go back and review.
Okay. So that's my beginning. Are there other Board Reports? I know we have, uh, NJROTC, Head Start.
Just a quick one.
What else? You, you go first.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to take a quick moment. I had a wonderful day, um, this morning. Uh, I don't know who said it this morning, but boy, if you need a uplift or, or, um, you know, just to, to feel good, spend a day at a school. And I just want to thank, um, West Marion Elementary this morning for having me, and, um, I just enjoyed hanging out with, um, we were kind of looking at the EC program and, uh, the teachers and, and the students there, and it was just such an enjoyable day and, um, eye-opening, and I thank you profusely for making me feel so welcome, the teachers making me feel so welcome, and, um, it, it was a great day, and I encourage all of you. I'll, I'll be glad at some time to just kind of share in an email just all of my great experiences, but, uh, it was a wonderful, wonderful way to start my day. Thank you very much.
All right. Ms. Silver?
So I'll go ahead and do my Head Start report, and, uh, Ms. Mumal, just to follow up on, on that, um, I just appreciate the opportunity to be able to go into several schools and, and do, uh, reading for Read Across America. And, um, so I was able to go to a third grade, I mean, a three-year-old classroom, and I was joking with Ms. Delaney about that this morning. Um, I was with children for thirty years, and they never scared me, but I went into a three-year-old classroom and like wanted to throw up. I mean, I was like, oh, what are they going to do to me? So just, just having that opportunity to just, just to be reminded again while we do everything that we do. Um, I did, uh, one of my favorite things about the, the second Monday of every month, despite what you guys might think that it's the Board meeting, is actually the Head Start Policy Council meeting, and, um, just always enjoy having that opportunity to be there. And, uh, Dr. Delaney shared some information that I felt like was worth sharing again, um, in the area of staffing. And again, thank you all for staying and, and sticking this out, because this is another way that, that you might, can reach out to some of our, uh, leaders here in our county again, and, uh, also at the state level that control funding. Um, as you've heard tonight, we, we do a great job of spending money. We don't do a great job of generating money, but, because we don't. Um, there are agencies in this county that, that do, uh, generate funding, and we'd love for your help to, to reach out to them, because in all of our areas, um, and Ms. Dattle would, would share that as well, being human resources, uh, the, the biggest area that we struggle with is staffing. And Dr. Delaney shared today that, um, our early Head Start is still looking for a lead teacher. Um, they are also looking for an instructional assistant in Head Start, and they are looking for a part-time Head Start family advocate. Uh, one thing that she was able to do, uh, I don't see her, I always look at her and make sure I don't say that, there she is. Uh, one thing they did, uh, that was, was a great thing was to advertise that in the McDowell News, and for some of the positions that she's recently hired for, they had over thirty applicants for those positions. Um, if we can catch issues and problems early, and this is exactly what our Head Start is doing, um, our NC pre-Ks are doing, it makes the transition for kids starting school so much, uh, easier. Um, the, out of the thirty applicants, though, uh, some of those people, uh, chose to not continue to seek employment in McDowell County Schools, and it's simply because of the salaries. We can't expect people to work for the salaries that we're able to pay them, but we're asking them to work with our children that for some of them are, you know, haven't been born long. So, so we're really, I think, as, as a county and maybe as a country, we're speaking out of both sides of our mouth. We're saying that we value education and we value early intervention, but are we, are we doing that? So once again, you know, if, if you'd like to reach out to anybody and, and say, wow, we need to increase some salaries, that would be, that would be fantastic. Um, one thing that Dr. Delaney did point out that, that has been a, um, an eye-opening experience for me, um, as she shared, Head Start is funded, uh, i- is a federal program, so they do have a guideline, uh, when they are, you're creating an early Head Start classroom and establishing it from the very beginning, you have a staff ratio of one adult for every four students, four children, four babies, however you want to call them. Um, but then North Carolina has, has a different statute, and in the daily operations of that, it can be one staff member for every eight children. So to set up a classroom, you need one, one adult for every four, but then the state says you can have one for every eight. And that causes a little bit of confusion, but it's, it's like, you know, I, I've had people ask me before, what are the, um, ratios of class sizes, you know, and, and the state likes to say that, you know, you can have one for ev-, you know, one to eighteen or one to twenty-two, but I, we aren't going to put a no vacancy sign up. Like, if kids are there, we're going to teach them. But, but that is a little bit, um, concerning there. But once again, um, we are so thankful for that cost of living adjustment. I think, Dr. Delaney, that's, that's one of the largest adjustments you said today in about ten years. So, so that's exciting, that's encouraging, but I, I do want to just reiterate the fact that people love kids, that's why they do the jobs that they do, they want to invest in the future, um, but, but love of kids doesn't buy groceries. And so we've got to continue to advocate for our people. And so, once again, just thank you for letting me serve on this committee. I enjoy it.
All right. Uh, Mr. Frank, do you have anything from ROTC?
I gave it at the beginning.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any, any other Board members have anything to share? If not, then I will tell you that I was able to attend the North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors Meeting, uh, first few days of March, and, uh, there is just so much going on in education all across this state. Uh, there's representation from eighteen different districts on that Board, and from the, uh, updates that we received, everything from educational policy to, uh, laws and statutes that were being considered by the legislature and how they may affect local boards of education. Uh, I heard a very interesting presentation from the Office of Learning Recovery, and they're going to try to share that out. I see Mr. Spivey and, uh, Ms. uh, Hamby shaking their head. I see you've been summoned already. But, uh, it's, it's really, education is a, a, really a busy subject in the state of North Carolina, much like it is here. Uh, felt privileged to be there and, uh, represent McDowell County well, even though I did get caught in a ten-mile traffic jam because of a traffic accident on the way down, and I got there late, and the chairman introduced me as Tommy.
Yeah.
But, uh, I just grinned and said, I'm, thank you, I'm here. So, uh, we'll carry on, and I'm sure there'll be some further updates on that. Uh, we'll move along then if there are no other Board Reports. Item number fourteen is approval of the Consent Agenda. And as you know, any item from the Consent Agenda may be considered separately if there's a majority vote of the Board.
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Frank to approve as presented.
Sure.
And a second by Mr. Schuford. Is there any discussion? If not, then all in favor? And that carries unanimously. Okay. The next item of business will be requesting a closed session, but before we get to that item, I really think we need to recognize our teaching and leadership staff in the room. Uh, you, you folks, y'all make all the difference for McDowell County. I, I hope you know that. I hope we, I hope we have told you that already, and if we haven't, we're telling you now. We don't have 8.6% in federal funds to give you a raise, but, uh, we appreciate what you do and your dedication. So, is there a motion then to go into closed session for those reasons that you find listed in our agenda this evening?
I make a motion to go into closed session. Second.
A motion by Ms. Silver, a second by Ms. Mumal. Is there any discussion? If not- If not, then all in favor of the motion, right hand. And the motion carries unanimously. We'll take about a five-minute break to give the public a chance to relocate, remove themselves from the room, and then we will go into closed session.
Okay, so the Board of Education at its regular March meeting is back in open session. And is there a motion to approve the personnel considerations, both certified and non-certified, as presented in that closed session?
So...
We have a motion by Ms. Muma. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Settles makes the second. Is there any discussion? If not, then all in favor of the motion, and the motion carries unanimously. We're down to item number seventeen, announcements, potential sc- called, excuse me, potential special call board meeting for consideration of construction bids for the McDowell High School Tennis Court project. And we touched on this briefly earlier. Uh, in talking with Mr. Oliver earlier this week, he recommended that we, we try to do this into this week or first to next, at the earliest, our latest, excuse me.
Yes, sir, I think. Mr. Campbell, sir, if we, uh, if we wanted to do this on Thursday, would we be okay to notice in the morning, or would we have to notice tonight?
Forty-eight hours now.
For a special call, there's only forty-eight, it's not seventy-two.
Yeah, forty-eight for a special call meeting.
Can you adjourn, can you adjourn this meeting to Thursday?
The other option is recess this meeting, and when you recess the meeting, you have to get a location, a date, and a time specific. So your mention at the end of tonight could be to recess until that time. Which is actually easier to do. I recommend that you do, even if you recess, then this book would still issue that notice that the board recessed, so you will recess.
For the, for the specific purpose.
For the specific time. Actually, you don't even have to recess for the specific purpose. You can simply recess the meeting until that day, but again, that would be a reason. It's a continuation of this.
Which do you, which do you recommend?
Um, I mean, I think that knowing that that is the specific reason that you want to meet, you're going to do it either way. I do think that when you notice a special call meeting for a specific purpose, it just, it kind of keeps going back to that purpose from another.
It also keeps folks from wondering what you're doing, too, right?
Yeah, the, you know, the only other, I'm trying to think, is there any other advantage to having any other topics addressed next person? If not, I think I'd go ahead and just do a special call meeting, that's simple. So the public knows exactly what you're gonna do. But you can do it anyway.
Well, let's talk about this before we get all carried away about a date and a time. It's Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Good for folks.
I can't be here Thursday morning at eight, tomorrow is adoption point.
Neither can, I can't be here at eight.
I mean, I'm just, I'm saying, that timeframe is out for me, but if we do it later.
Well, I, I think it would probably be easier for most folks if we could do it like over their lunch hour, say like noon, it shouldn't take quite.
Shouldn't take long.
Twenty minutes? Would Friday be a better day?
Friday's worse. I can be there at Thursday. How many do we need, five, six?
Five, we have to have five.
Have to have at least five, but then we have to have all yes minutes.
Looking thirsty, isn't it?
Or not. Well, that, we're just kind of thinking out loud right now.
Right.
Right. So...
Prefer the Friday, but I can do Thursday, too.
Okay.
I cannot do Friday at lunch. You can do Thursday at lunch. Okay, so you're out, remember that. If we're doing it at lunch, yes.
Hey, you could, you could participate by Zoom or by telephone.
Okay. Shake, take, look, yeah, let's do what Mr. Frank said, let's do a head count. Who can do Thursday at lunch?
I can.
I think five, six, seven's good.
Cause we're saying twelve.
Friday would be easier for me, but I don't have to, if I can't make it, y'all got plenty.
Friday, Friday, do we get more people for you Friday at noon?
It seemed like it was less on Friday, Friday.
What time?
Around noon.
What time?
Yeah, I can probably do it by noon.
On Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Friday's worse for me, but...
It's worse for me, too.
So, how many hands can do Friday at noon?
I can shakey.
I can.
Shakey.
Shake and shaky.
Okay, so the Board of Education at its regular March meeting is back in open session. And is there a motion to approve the personnel considerations, both certified and non-certified, as presented in that closed session? We have a motion by Ms. Mumal. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Suddles makes the second. Is there any discussion? If not, then all in favor of the motion? And the motion carries unanimously? We're down to item number seventeen, announcements, potential sc- called, excuse me, potential special call board meeting for consideration of construction bids for the McDowell High School tennis court project. And we touched on this briefly earlier. In talking with Mr. Oliver earlier this week, he recommended that we, we try to do this into this week or first to next, at the earliest, our latest, excuse me.
Yes, sir, I think. Mr. Campbell, sir, if we, if we wanted to do this on Thursday, would we be okay to notice in the morning, or would we have to notice tonight? For a special call, there's only forty-eight, it's not seventy-two.
Yeah, forty-eight for a special call meeting.
Can you adjourn, can you adjourn this meeting to Thursday?
The other option is recess this meeting. And when you recess the meeting, you have to get a location, a date, and a time specific. So your motion at the end of tonight could be to recess until that time opens. Which is actually easier to do. I recommend that you do, even if you recess, then this book would still issue that. No, it's just more recessed, we will recess.
For the, for the specific purpose?
For the specific time. Actually, don't even have to recess for a specific purpose. You can simply recess the meeting until that day. But, again, there would be a reason to do that. It's a continuation of this.
Which do you, which do you recommend?
I mean, I think that knowing that that is the specific reason that you want to meet, you're going to do it either way. I, I do think that when you notice a special call meeting for a specific purpose, it just, it kind of keeps going back to that purpose rather than another reason.
It also keeps folks from wondering what you're doing, T-Rod.
Yeah, the, you know, the only other, I'm trying to think, is there any other advantage to having any other topics addressed next Thursday? If not, I think I'd go ahead and just do a special call meeting notice. So the problem is exactly what you can do.
Well, let's talk about this before we get all carried away about a date and a time. It's Thursday. Good for folks.
I can't be here Thursday morning at eight, tomorrow is adoption point.
Neither can, I can't be here at eight.
I mean, I'm just, I'm saying, that timeframe is out for me, but if we do it later.
Well, I, I think it would probably be easier for most folks if we could do it like over their lunch hour, say like noon. It shouldn't take quite.
Shouldn't take long.
Twenty minutes? Would Friday be a better day?
Friday's worse. I can be there Thursday. How many do we need, five, six?
Five. We have to have five.
Have to have at least five, but then we have to have all yeses.
Looking thirsty, isn't it?
Or not.
Well, that, we're just kind of thinking out loud right now.
I prefer the Friday, but I can do Thursday, I can do two.
Okay.
I cannot do Friday at lunch.
You can do Thursday at lunch. Okay, so you're out, I'm in.
If we're doing it at lunch, yes.
Hey, you could, you could participate by Zoom or by telephone.
Shit, take, look, yeah, let's do what Mr. Frank said, let's do a head count. Who can do Thursday at lunch?
I can.
Five, six, seven's good.
That's, we're saying twelve.
Friday would be easier for me, but I don't have to, if I can't make it, y'all got plenty.
Do we get more people for your Friday at noon?
It seemed like it was less on Friday, Friday.
What time?
Around noon.
What time?
Yeah, I can probably be here by noon.
On Friday? Friday's worse for me, but.
It's worse for me, too.
How many hands can do Friday at noon?
I can shakey.
I can.
Shakey.
Shake and shaky.
Well, it looks like seven on Thursday and six on Friday.
And shaky.
Make it on Thursday.
Thursday at noon?
Okay.
Becky, you'll get that notice in the morning? It shouldn't, I mean, it, I mean, anything could last longer than you expect, but.
Well, we'll all have the information prior to the meeting.
Yes, sir.
One right here, location-wise, right?
Yes, sir, that'd be great, to do it right here. We'll be doing the bid openings here as well.
Someone's gonna tell us the money is there?
That will be, that's gonna come from the finance committee and.
And your own finance committee.
And the.
But I mean, so we'll have to make.
You might be someone.
A big part of that will come from Ms. Rampy to tell us if we, if we agree to one of the proposals.
Whoa, 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 backup.
I'm not here to say, but I would show you, this is coming out of our, the funds that are held at the county that are construction plans, so that would come out of our sales tax, uh, funds from the county, is what we're, we're talking about. When we look at any construction, and we're putting that, and we've already budgeted in there for this project.
One point one.
We budgeted one point one.
So, you know, we budget up to two million dollars every year. And we never got close to that, because they wanted to hold the building. So I have some issues with that.
Unless it, the bid comes in at two million dollars.
I have to tell you that I'm extremely confused. What are we meeting about Thursday?
We're meeting to.
Approve.
To consider and hopefully approve one of the bids for the tennis court project.
Oh, we're not, I'm not scheduling it Thursday. I'll be here Thursday at twelve, you'll tell me once. Okay, sorry. I'm sorry, I hope, somehow, we're, nevermind, nevermind.
Yeah, to prove the bid, and then, and then what she's saying is, we have one point one million dollars already outpays.
Well, when she said one point one million dollars, I thought, I am confused.
And then, what we're gonna look for when we get these bids is what the difference is from that one point one million. And that's what Mr. Abernathy was asking, is like, do we have the funds?
Right. I, I, my brain was down a different road.
Good, okay, it's.
But it's, I'm on track.
Okay.
You're not ever asking me that question.
Okay, so, uh, we don't have to have an official motion or anything, do we?
Not for a special call meeting, Chair and Superintendent can call special call meetings.
Okay, so the special call meeting will be Thursday at noon in boardroom at the central office.
Can I imagine Ms. Smith will have lunch for those who attend?
She might, she might. Okay.
After all the accolades you got tonight, that's the least you can do.
Find, find out what Suzanne likes best for lunch, that's what we'll have, since she won't be here.
Yes, let's do that, yes.
I like it.
We'll try to have orange cake, okay?
Okay. Uh, one other item, the March Board Work Session. We scheduled that for Monday, March twenty-seventh, six o'clock here. And, uh, we were thinking that to begin the work session, we might ask our, we have four appointees to the Board of Trustees to McDowell Tech, might have them come and be with us and give just a real brief report, what committees they serve on, how that affects our students that attend McDowell Tech. And it's basically just so folks can put a base with the name. So that if, you know, we bump into them, have calls to contact them, we'll have some, some idea of who we're talking to. And then, the big item, we're hoping will be budget and finance. And, uh, we'll have a budget and finance report. And I, Ms. Mumal and myself and Mr. Oliver were kind of hoping that this could be as much of a budget thinking session as it could be just like a budget finance report. So I asked the Chair of our Finance Committee if he would contact his members, and they, along with Ms. Rampy, could, uh, come up with some things that they felt like the Board should have on their radar over the next couple of years. For example, what about our local teacher supper program? That's just one example. So, after that, expect probably another update on the superintendent search process. That's probably an item that will be at every gathering that we're all together on. And probably an item that will have a lot of electronic communication as well.
Do we have a date for this survey stuff to be completed?
Talking about the superintendent's. I have already sent an email to your Chair and vice Chair with a detailed list of recommendations to send out to all of you, and we'll be discussing that probably before Thursday.
Awesome, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Well, while you're here, we could just.
I wanted to make myself useful while I was here.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Mr. Campbell a quick question?
Why, absolutely.
Mr. Campbell, you just discussed the possibilities, uh, for, for budget items to come up in the near future. Uh, and this, this borders on, on, uh, closed session item, but I want to ask this. In open session, if we have any legalities, and I think you know where I'm con- where I'm going to, that could possibly affect our Board budget, that has to come out of local funds, if, 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 if we have to pay it, can we discuss that during this work session? Not, without mentioning any names? We all know about the lawsuit.
I think that anything that would relate to personnel or to a potential legal liability, specific liability, even if you don't use names, that needs to be in court session.
Okay.
And any committee who's going to court session for personnel or to discuss legal issues, but the attorney has to be there, if you're talking about legal issues. Now, that can be electronic, it has to be in person. The attorney can join by telephone or by Zoom, but the attorney wouldn't be there. Does that answer your question?
Very much so, yes, sir.
Are you asking if we should reserve funds for a possible lawsuit?
Uh, uh, I can't, we can't discuss.
Okay.
That's what we're saying.
But that's what, okay.
I could discuss that.
There is a lawsuit, I may have discussed this, and this is probably not, here's, lawsuit pending right now, you are represented by Colonel Law Firm out of Greensboro.
That is correct.
And that's taken, and at some point, it is, you are declined, so you need an update, particularly a closed session update on that lawsuit, and you don't hesitate to ask.
We're actually at two.
You're at two, that's correct. And we are waiting on a, a ruling from the North Carolina Supreme Court on that particular law. So that's kind of why it's in a holding pattern. But I would strongly suggest that be a closed session with the retained time.
Yes, sir.
Mr. English, at our special call meeting on Thursday, Kim, I'm looking at our new board members that are completely lost, that just heard this information. Can, can we go into closed session at that meeting to just update them on what we are talking about?
I would recommend that you, since you've got new board members, that you ask the firm from Greensboro to give you an update, be a closed session, and it can be at your next closed session meeting, it doesn't have to be, uh, it can be at the work session if you'd like for it to be, but I, considering where things are with the, uh, lighting on the ruling, I, I don't see any problem for you to do it in a change right immediately. And just have that attorney join by telephone.
We can do that. We can do that.
But that would be good for the Board to have an update on that. Because I believe those are the only two pieces of litigation this.
Yes.
This school district is facing right now. That would be real good, to give the new board members a statement.
Welcome, one and all.
Okay. All right.
Can I have one more question?
Absolutely.
Will there be any more Dream Builders discussion prior to voting at the, at the April meeting? Are we done with that?
At the work session?
Anytime.
Well, once you've put a motion through to whatever we do, and then someone seconds that motion, then there will be discussion. If you want to add more discussion prior to that, we can do that at the work session. That's not on the agenda right now for the work session, but we can definitely add it. It just, um, we were just, we just hadn't added it yet, but as always, when we make a motion and then you get a second, then there's always opportunity for discussion. But if you want to add it to a work session, we can.
Well, Miss, well, since we have our Board Attorney here, Mr. Campbell, how would you advise us to proceed? Because I, I know the board members would like a chance to converse with one another about it as a group, instead of individually through an email chain, or phone chain, text chain. There's just something about being together and talking through these things.
If I could ask one more question, do all board members have a concrete contract?
We do.
So at this point, it's just a matter of additional discussion. Again, it is, i- if board members want to hear the input of other board members, or they'll be ready to vote, to do it in a work session. To give the additional time and consider everyone's interest. That's true, and I want to.
And then, but that would have to be open session?
Oh, yeah, it's gonna all be open.
Right.
There is nothing closed session about this decision that I can make.
Right.
Unless you want to talk about a specific contract time, so if you do, let the Chair do it.
So if the public, so if the public asks us for the total amount that we're paying for this service?
The amount identified under the contract is probably greater than the contract. You are spending tax dollars, and there is nothing confidential about this decision.
So as an individual, if we're approached and asked that specific question, how much is Dream Builders asking you for that?
I would recommend, and again, I give you the same recommendation, no matter if it's. Tell folks that you want to make sure that they get accurate information. Sometimes things can get updated, sometimes there can be, you know, amendments to these. I would recommend like everything to your superintendent, and then give them a heads-up about every, I would make it easy if I was a board member, y'all probably say this before, I'd rather everything than superintendent.
You go get some phone calls.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Does that help you?
So, so are you saying at the workshop, there will be a discussion of the presentation tonight?
There can be.
There can be if that's what the Board so desires.
I think that would be a good thing.
All right. We can, we can accommodate.
It's a logical time to do it, it's already scheduled.
Chair, or, Mr. Frank, are you? You agree?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I think we're gonna discuss it, let's get it for a meeting, and, but, you know, if we're gonna talk about it, we need to talk about it before we get that meeting.
I agree.
I, I, I want to say this, you made a comment earlier today, and I, what Donnie just said, uh, you, you being the son of a, a Marine Corps Colonel, they can handle things, uh, and he can handle phone calls, I, I agree with you.
See, thanks.
And I hate to admit that, being in the Air Force.
I'll make sure I call my dad, I can reach him.
Tell him to temper Fidelis, sir.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're gonna have a big work session on, uh, March twenty-seventh, six P M. here in the boardroom. Might want to bring your sleeping bag and your pajamas.
Oh, I don't know, but let's be optimistic, I don't think it's gonna.
And Mr. Chair, while you're at it, um, I think it would be great if the Board should go ahead and everyone check their calendars real quick, and let's set April the twenty-fifth, for you to review superintendent applications for the work meetings.
Okay, and what day of the week would that be on?
That's a Tuesday, isn't it?
A Tuesday.
Our board meeting in April's the seventeenth.
Yes.
Because it was moved.
Right. And that's something.
The point is, get you all of the applications in your hand by April the twenty-first, which is a Friday. And that, so that would give you the weekend and Monday to look them over for the first round of discussion on the Tuesday.
This meeting on the twenty-fifth, can we, can we set that time now?
Yes, we can. We can.
I mean, already, I can see I'll have to shift a bunch of stuff in my schedule.
What, what would be most accommodating to you?
Well, I, I can accommodate, I can, I can shift my, I just gotta know.
She's just gonna have notice to shift her schedule. How long do you think we need?
Um, I would plan on, I would plan on a couple hours. My experience is we can get done quick, because again, but I would say a couple hours, because there could be two or three people that shall be talking.
Okay. So, do you guys?
Eight thirty till lunch-ish, or?
You want the morning or evening?
Well, eve- evening, I don't have to adjust any of my schedules, I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine to adjust my schedule, it just, if I know now, then I can, I can accommodate that better if we're gonna do it during the day. And I prefer if we can do it in the morning time versus, well, actually, it doesn't really matter to me, it doesn't.
I can't, but I don't have to be here for that. But, um, that Tuesday morning from seven thirty until probably about nine thirty, I'm, I'm completely out of, out of pocket.
On the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, is that the fourth Tuesday? Yeah.
So our work session's the twenty-fourth?
We don't have a work session, it's gonna be April.
How about that, Beth, get on board again?
Well, that, that, that changed when the board meeting was shifted.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, if we have to, we can.
If you did the twenty-fourth at ten, I, that would, if, to stay in the morning, I couldn't do that.
The twenty-fifth, you mean?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Ten o'clock.
Twenty-fifth at ten?
What about it, Miss Hamms? What's, you're busy, I know.
Well, I mean, I've got patients scheduled, I could try to clear off that morning, because we're scheduled out a couple, three nights.
Well, that'd give us, what, a month and a week? Okay. Well, i- it's really important that everybody is here for that, so if, if you find out.
Well, just tell me a time and I'll make sure I'm clear.
Okay. Uh, so what time suits everyone? Ten to twelve?
I mean, I, I can do anything, I'm completely flexible, that far out.
Would it be better if it was lunchtime?
Would it be better if it was from, say, eleven to one?
Would that be better? Okay, eleven to one, would that work?
Okay, now, we have to figure out whether this room's gonna be busy that day or not.
We'll figure that out, we can clear it, we need to.
Okay.
We've got plenty of space that we can ship to.
All right.
P D inserts.
Okay, eleven to one on.
April twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth. Here in the boardroom. And would that require public notification?
It will, it will be a closed session meeting, but I'll act in a position where you can come up with a. What we like to do is give a full information, it's provided board's name, or board's doing, so the folks understand why.
Right. Okay. All right, then, anything else?
Yeah, before you close, I just want to throw it out there, because it's open session, I want the public to hear this, too. I want all the board members, if you will, really think about, and I've not wanted to do this in the past, but for some reason, I think it's necessary, it's not personally a, a need for me personally, but I think it's, it's only a fair question to ask for all of us, is that we're doing all these meetings now, more than we ever have before. We're answering phone calls from concerned citizens. I've answered phone calls from county commissioners all week long. So, if county commissioners are gonna make eighteen hundred dollars a month, and we're making four fifty, I think we need to look in ourselves about at least gas money, an increase for Board of Education pay to cover at least our gas money or something for everybody that needs it. So just think about it, it's an open session. I love giving to the county my time as much as I can, uh, but I would like to get my gas paid sometimes, and if county commissioner would continue to call, I would like to be an equal partner.
Hey, the procedural way to address that, in my opinion, is to include any budget requests as a line item in the budget request.
Okay.
And a lot of times, because the county has to approve that statute. So you include it in your budget, include it as a line item, so the entire world in the county can see. Then when the county gives you a lump sum, you're able to spend that money.
Mr. Campbell.
So that's the procedural we do.
I observed, well, watched Asheville City, uh, I think it was Asheville City, or Buncombe County won, their superintendent made the recommendation that he wanted his, uh, one of those two wanted the board members to have the raise, and the superintendent, is that the way that that goes through?
Look, the superintendent, it was included in the forward approved budget request, he just delivered the message.
Okay.
So it comes from a, with the budget choice.
Yeah, right, okay.
To me, Donnie, what would be helpful is if Suzanne could do four, five, or six counties around us.
Right.
And if we're way off, you know, which we probably are, with four hundred or whatever.
For the amount of time.
But it would be, be nice to know what, uh, I don't know about Buncombe, but maybe Rutherford.
Black County.
Sure.
Caldwell. Burke, maybe.
I think that's a good.
That's always a good idea.
Yeah.
But.
I have a bigger per capita.
Me, too.
All right. Anything else? If not, then, is there a motion to adjourn?
I think a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Ms. Silver makes the motion, Mr. Suddles makes the second. Is there any discussion, questions, clarification? Hallelujahs, thank yous, all in favor? And the motion carries.
Ms. Dowdell?
All in favor, go home.